To YouTube and then after this gets done, I will actually begin recording the webinar. And then after that, you can officially call the meeting to order when you're ready.
All right. Thanks, Casey.
Yep. Stand by everyone. Okay, it appears.
And then after this gets done, I will actually.
Okay. All right. So we're live on YouTube and now I'm going to throw up the agenda and start the recording. So I'm starting the recording now. Okay, and now I'm going to screen share the agenda. Okay, so I think I've done what I need to do for your technology at the moment. I will say there are 20 attendees, 10 panelists. And I already see a raised hand. Just want Megan to, I know you're keeping track of that, Megan.
Good to see Dick Cutler. He's on board.
So I think technically we're there. Okay.
Dick Cutler, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
All right. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Can you see me okay?
I thought I could for a minute, but I'm the worst.
We see you Commissioner Cutler.
Yes, we do. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm clear.
Well, thank you.
Outstanding. Okay.
Okay, everyone, just stand by for another minute. We're waiting on, we think there's one more planning commissioner.
And so Casey, you're, you're in effect, ready to go, right? Is that?
Yep, we are. We're live streaming on YouTube. We're recording the webinar. So technically, yep, we're, we're ready to go whenever you guys want to call the meeting to order. Looks like we have 21 attendees.
And Casey, once we get going, you'll take the agenda down and go back into. Or is that going to stay up permanently?
Would you like me to? I can.
Once we get started, yeah, I like seeing all the commissioners. And staff faces.
Yeah, you bet. Just let me know if you want me to throw it back up at any time.
Okay, thanks, Casey. And Casey, are we? Oh, so this is live on YouTube, but are we also, it looks like we're recording the Zoom session as well. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, it looks like, yep. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we have that clip.
Yeah, so we kind of have, we have two master recordings in a way.
Okay, thank you. Want to thank everyone for your patience. We are, this is a new technology for many of us. A new way of conducting the meeting. So hang on for a moment, we might. One of our commissioners might just be having problems or maybe not be coming tonight. So we're just going to give him an extra minute.
Feel like we need some lounge music.
Something, don't you?
Or maybe the crashing of waves, right? How about that?
Yeah, something, some meditation sounds.
Yeah, yeah. Some erosion sounds.
How relaxing that would be for.
If the meeting goes for a really long time, can we have like an intermission?
Yes, I have, I've already talked to staff and you can let me know if you need to take a break. We'll kind of go over that a little bit here in a moment as well, but definitely if it's, things are going wrong, I, I'm a big proponent of taking little breaks to, at least one break, get something to drink or whatever.
Thank you.
Sure.
And of course, there shouldn't be a temptation to go that long tonight because we know with the request for the record to be open and the last minute submission of material in opposition, we're not going to be, we're not taking action tonight, so.
Hey, and I would add that so far it looks like all of the attendees, their first and last names feel at least what's representative is, is descriptive. So that's nice.
Great.
That's matching up.
Okay, it is five after, so.
Hey.
If Commissioner Spolnik arrives, I'm sure he will join us in progress. So at this moment in time, I'm going to convene the Lincoln County Planning Commission meeting for June 14th, 2021. Megan, can you call the role, please? Absolutely. Chair Bobbitt?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
Commissioner Kier? Not in attendance, that's right. Commissioner Lambrecht?
Here.
Commissioner Spolnik? Not present. Commissioner Stratton?
Here.
Commissioner Bukehagen?
Here.
Thank you. All right, um, we do have a quorum if we needed one, which.
You forgot Commissioner Cutler.
Oh.
Oh.
I really. I apologize, Commissioner, Commissioner Cutler.
Some of us are easily forgotten.
We're not forgotten. I'm so sorry. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Okay, um. So I just want, before we get going here, just a little bit of commissioner rules here. And it looks like most people are, got their, got themselves muted, which is good just for background noise. And if I want staff to let me know if my mic becomes a problem, I do have an open window. So if I'm not going to be on mute. Um. And if you need to get, to say something, get my attention and then we will go from there. So if that's okay with everyone, or if you're having any problem with technology, please let me know. All right. Okay, at this time, is there any past action review for the planning commission?
None at this time.
Okay. Um. Is there anyone that has items that are not on the agenda from the public? So we have our three cases regarding goal 18 exception tonight, but is there any other issues that anyone needs to have public comment?
Seeing. I don't think they're in a position to, because of the way the technology is working to say at this point anyway, so.
All righty.
So we're not, we're obviously not going to have that tonight. That would have been, that would have been difficult to make happen, so.
Okay, so there's no hand raising with the attendees. Okay. They can't raise their hand, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm keeping my eye on.
We would, but we would ask the attendees to, if they raise their hand, that, that ultimately they get switched to where they can say something, but the, the point, it'll be clear, Madam Chair, don't you agree that the time where people are anticipating to testify will be, there'll be this, there's going to be a staff report.
Right, this is for items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, right, okay, so.
Yeah, we're, we're good. Okay, um. I want, Casey, if you could switch off the agenda for right now, because we're going to go right into the hearing process here. Okay, tonight, we're holding a live virtual electronic public hearing on three cases. These are case file 01-LUPC21. The applicants are the Sea Ridge condominiums. Case file 02-LUPC-21, which is the Worldmark condominiums. And case file 03-LUPC-21, and that's the Lincoln Avenue homeowners. Which is John Edward and Joan Tenabi, Richard and Sally Grant, Terry and Janice DeSylvia, and Sherri Kane. Each of the applicants request an amendment to the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan to Adopt a Goal Exception to Goal 18 Implementation Requirement 5. The effect of the goal exceptions would be to allow the placement of beachfront protective structures on the subject properties. It should be noted that while we're having a single hearing on each of these three goal exception application, at the conclusion of the process, the planning commission will take action on each of these applications independently of each other, which is why there are three applications. So we will be voting on each one separately at that point in time. Approval of these requests, if granted, will be implemented through the adoption of ordinance by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. The public hearing before the planning commission will constitute the public hearing required for the enactment of the zoning ordinance pursuant to ORS 215-233. Unless the decision of the planning commission is appealed in accordance with LCC 1.1268, no additional public hearing will be conducted by the Board of Commissioners. The applicable criteria, the following criteria are the applicable criteria from Chapter 1 of the Lincoln County Code, LCC, and from the Oregon Administrative Rules, OARs, are applicable to the request. These are Section 1.1235 quasi judicial amendments, Section 1.1225 amendments, Section 1.0205 beaches and dunes policies, Section 1.1252 notice of exception to statewide planning goals, Section 1.1310 residential zone R1, OAR Chapter 660 Division 15 statewide planning goals and guidelines, OAR Chapter 660 Division 4 interpretation of goal to exception process. This part is very important. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria just described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba based on that issue. That's speak now or forever, forever hold your peace, I think is summary for that. At this time, I ask the planning commissioners to disclose any ex parte communications and any bias or conflicts of interest regarding these three applications.
I will disclose that I have a membership with Worldmark. And gives me the right to, two to three weeks of vacation reservations every year in some 50 to 80 resorts.
Okay.
Not, not at Glen Eden Beach in particular.
All right, and will that in any way influence your decision?
No, I will evaluate all the information and data and analysis with an unbiased point of view.
Okay. Any other commissioners? I'll state for the record that before I even knew that, that we were going to hear this, I did see was way back when, something on the news and about the houses, you know, being affected by erosion. But since then, I have not, I understand there have been other articles in local papers and stuff. I have not seen any of that. And it's well, no way influenced my decision, but I did see some picture somewhere a long time ago. Anyone else?
Yes, I will say I did as well. Yes. Sorry.
Yes, Shailen?
Um, I need to state that up until three weeks ago, I held shares in Worldmark that have been sold prior to consideration of this, this particular, these applications. And it in no way influences my decisions or my consideration.
Okay.
This is Council Herbage for the record, just for those listening in, if you have any challenges to any of our planning commission members making the decision, you know, you can so note, but on the record, they have indicated that they can be fair and impartial and follow the rules, follow the listen to the evidence and apply the criteria to making the decision. I think that's what they all said.
Okay. Um. Before we get going here, um, thus again, and the format of this meeting is unusual, being electronic and whatnot. So as I said before, stay in mute unless you're speaking. If, and before you speak, please be asked for me to recognize you so we can keep things going. I would prefer if you take notes while someone is testifying and don't interrupt them if possible and ask your questions when they're finished unless it's super important to interrupt them right then. But again, please let me know when you're, that you want to do that. Um. Also, we are, it's really important to note that this is a Zoom webinar that has a chat feature. That chat feature is not part of the record. We are not using that in any form. And it's, so it is not part of the, any testimony. So testimony will be given orally or from documents that we have received. Casey's already indicated that the spellings of people who are participating, it looks like is their names are correct, which is very important for records. And again, everyone patience for, for following through this process. And if there's any questions from the commissioners, just let us know. Okay, at this time, let's note, I guess staff could note what correspondence we have received at this point.
Yeah, I'm sure. So we've received, I'm going to say numerous letters. Bear with me, I haven't actually counted them. Probably 20 20 to high twenties to 30 letters. More recently, we received correspondence from Oregon Shores. That was just today within the last hour. Surf Rider as well. We have received correspondence from Glen Eden Sanitary District. That was late last week. We also received correspondence from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. And the majority of the, the correspondence we received is proponent comments. Oregon Shores, and I haven't read the letter, so I'm just going to suggest that they're expressing opposition based on what little bit I have read. Surf Rider seemed to express a more neutral position. DLCD, I would say a neutral position. And Glenian Sanitary District, I think they were proponent of, of the, the exception. The vast majority of other letters we received from individuals were proponent letters. And then we did receive one letter email today that's been PDFed. It's all, all of this is available on the website right now. And we did receive one individual sent an email in opposition, although I, I think it's fair to say the opposition was not, it did not bring up any criteria. It didn't really address the, the goal exception process. It was more concerned about the effects of riprap on adjacent properties to the Sea Ridge development to the north. And that's, that's the correspondence we've got to date. Is there any, do you have any specific questions? Anything else you, you want me to cover on that?
No, I just wanted to note that thank you for putting it all up. I have read every single one of them except for that big one that just landed today. And I trust that the other commissioners have read all these correspondence. And so for people testifying, assume that we have read this and that. So if you have something different in, than what we have already received, that would be worth testifying for at this time. But yeah, it was there, it's really good to see a lot of public participation and thank you for all, all the letters on, on all sides. Okay. At this time, we're going to have, okay, so the format for the meeting is that the staff will present a report. And then we'll have time for commissioners, we'll ask questions of the staff regarding the staff report. Then the applicants will provide testimony and it's, we understand that the three lawyer, that the lawyers representing the, each case will be giving some testimony. And at that time, if there's any other testimony in favor, we'll hear that. And then we'll get to testimony against. And that is as far as things will go this evening with the record being held open. So at this time, we will have staff give their report.
Thank you, Chair Bobbitt. Members of the commission for the record, my name is Anno Husing. I'm the Director of the Planning Program. I'm going to, I've am going to give some remarks about the staff report and about tonight. I'm joined in doing so with, by Jerry Herb, which are Assistant County Councils. So as, as you know, I am more than happy to have Jerry pop in at any minute and, and offer some additional commentaries on the process itself, since he's been intimately involved with all this. So in effect, you have two of us. I'll, I'll start by making some opening comments. So yes, indeed, these are, these are three different goal exception applications. And so they, they, they involve different properties that actually have different stories about how and when they got developed. But they all share the same desire, the applicants, they are hoping to get a goal exception to be in effect excused or have the goal 18 requirements under implementation rule five that right now are prohibiting them from getting riprap to protect their properties. So three separate applications dealing with, they're all located physically within one section of the beach in Lincoln Glen Eden Beach. They, and so here's how, this is how we could sort of got to this stage, was that the, the applicants, it's, it's interesting and important to recognize that the applicants, we all sort of struggled with, how do we, how do we carry out this, this hearing in a way that's going to make sense? Because while the applicants have due different, do have different stories about when their properties were developed and how were they developed? They're sharing these fact patterns about what is happening in Lincoln Glen Eden Beach. So I recall early in the process, the applicants were urging Lincoln County to take this matter up as a legislative, through a legislative process rather than a quasi judicial process. But we got to a point where the county declined to take it on legislatively. And a lot of that had to do with just the logistics of all these reports and all this information that could be generated. It really made a lot of, and the logistics on the burden of our, our department to try to, with everything else, do the, you know, originate this legislative process. Again, internally, we, we made the decision and asked the applicants to go ahead and we would, we declined to do it legislatively. That's why we're in a quasi judicial process. But that's entirely appropriate that this can be handled through a, or a quasi judicial process. So that's why we find ourselves here today with three applications, but doing it in this kind of collaborative process here. But again, at the end, there'll be three separate votes on each of the applications. But Chair Bobbitt and others, I, I think it's really important again, to talk about what, what this, what this is all about procedurally, so we can understand why is the Lincoln County Planning Commission in such an instrumental role at this point, this early point in the process? And, and a lot of it has to do with let's, let's all take a moment to understand what is Lincoln County's role in this, all of this riprap business? The actual permit that the applicants are seeking is an ocean shore alteration permit that would, if granted, and it's granted by Oregon State Parks. So, so really what's, what we're talking about here is a, the, their end game, they hope is to, is to receive an ocean shore alteration permit from Oregon State Parks to install beach protection structures in front of their properties to protect their properties. So where do we come in on this? I'm going to, this is my only prop for the evening. This, this is a notebook of right now, the 40 different land use compatibility statements that we've already issued this year. The reason I showed you that and I talked about the 40 of these is that these land use compatibility statements are really pretty routine in our department. Now, goal exceptions are anything but routine. I've never been involved with one before, so they're, they're a pretty big deal and they're not common, whereas land use compatibility statements are common. Now let's talk, what is a land use compatibility statement? So in Oregon, because we've got a pretty robust land use system and the land, remember the land use system was adopted by statute back in 73. We spent the 1970s getting the counties and the cities planning. And, and so then, then we had these plans and we, and the state provides oversight. But it was in 1990 that the Oregon Legislature to really, to really make sure all of this was knitted together in Oregon under land use. They also, they also required under statute some, and it was, there were also administrative rules promulgated that really makes sure that every, that virtually every state agency that's issuing a permit and state agencies issue permits to people for all sorts of things that they have to, that before they issue a permit, they need to make sure that whatever they might be issuing this, a permit for is that it's compatible with the land use system. That's, so the name is very instructive, a land use compatibility statement, a lux. That, what that is, is, is an affirmative duty on the part of these state agencies. So in this case, it's Oregon State Parks. To before they process an ocean shore alteration permit, they need to, they need to ask the applicants to touch base with, in this case, Lincoln County to make sure that they are goal 18 eligible. Now these luxes, of course, right, happen with all sorts of other st agencies we have. So if you want to, if you want a permit to access your property from Highway 101 and you need an access permit from the Oregon Department of Transportation, it's the same process. There's a lux involved. ODOT's not going to issue an access permit unless they know that the land use that's being, that, that's being served by that access permit is lawful under Oregon's land use plan, a planning system. So that's why on a regular basis, when people are trying to get permits from the state, very often they're run through us to get a land use compatibility statement. And usually it's only one page in a larger state permit where we check off, yes, it's compatible or no, it's not compatible or, or the, whatever's being proposed is not, is not really regulated under our plan. But it really provides a gatekeeper function. Because that way, and it makes sense to do it, doesn't it? Because we don't want state agencies issuing permits for things that can't be approved under, under other Oregon laws. And I think the public wants to know that we're providing these coordinated functions. So it's actually makes an awful lot of sense to have these land use compatibility statements. This way, everybody is not wasting their time and upfront, they can understand where they stand in the system and where they can, very often they'll learn if they can get a permit in the first place. So that's what this is all about. So typically, this is how it works. Now let's focus for a minute on, on people who are seeking riprap. So a lot of times what happens is oceanfront property owners, if they're discovering and if they feel like their property is now being threatened by the ocean, and if they want either a seawall or a riprap project, they're either starting their conversation with Lincoln County, if they're in Lincoln County, of course, they're starting their conversation with us, or a lot of times they're also starting the conversation directly with state. Or a lot of times they're also starting the conversation directly with State Parks. And there's an awful lot of collaboration there where the folks from State Parks will say to them right away, well, you got to make sure that, you know, you're eligible or not, that the land use system will allow us, meaning State Parks, to even issue this permit based on your eligibility status. So that's, that's really all we do. At least when I say we, the county, we've got a very narrow, limited role in this process of being the keeper of information and signing off, and it's a land use decision to do that on the eligibility criteria. So yes, we use as one of the sources of information and, and there's been some testimony and it's been discussed in the staff report. We do benefit greatly by using a, an inventory that was developed by staff at the Department of Land Conservation and Development that painstakingly went through every single one of these oceanfront properties and as it says in the staff report, and analyzed, compared against their criteria with this implementation rule five under goal 18. What is the goal, what is the goal 18 status of all of these properties? And so when someone comes to, when someone comes to our department or they call in or they want to know about a property in general, we're always telling them about goal 18. If, if people that are asking questions about properties, we'll bring up the goal 18 status. And sometimes, of course, people are already in the market or trying to get a riprap job. So they're calling us about that. And we, of course, either confirm or deny that what we believe they, their status is under, under goal 18. Now, if it's not to say that, 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 that we are not slaves to that inventory. We will, we are happy to get any amount of additional information from property owners. And in fact, not long ago, we changed an eligibility for a property because under this, under the state's inventory, it said the property was not eligible. But of course, every time a property is not eligible and they're threatened, trust me, there's a review that goes on about all the facts because it's a big deal for those property owners if they can't get the riprap. So in this case, just, just this past winter, just a couple of months ago, and it, there was a property owner that their property was threatened. It was our understanding based on the inventory that they were not eligible. And as we started to review our own records to make sure that we were providing the most accurate information we could, I read a staff report issued a couple decades ago that referenced the existence of a house on that property and that contradicted what the state had. And I immediately turned around and, and worked with our, our colleagues at DLCD and said, hey, look what I found in one of our staff reports. This proves conclusively, there was a house on that property on January 1st, 1977. And, and it, it was no big deal. We instantly both, the state changed their eligibility criteria, but we did too, because we had good, solid information that said in this case, in that rare case, that the inventory was an error. And so we fixed it. And so that's kind of how it, I, I think it's so important that we understand that right now, and so many of the questions have been asked are really pretty far afield about riprap and all these kinds of things. But we do have this very narrow task of signing off one way or another on a land use compatibility statement. So in this circumstance though, we're, that's really what people normally want from us. But because we have felt all along and the applicants have never tried to contest their goal 18 status by applying for a permit from State Parks, getting us to sign off on it. And if they believed we were wrong, then they could have appealed that land use compatibility. See, that's never been done. So at this point, I gotta believe, notwithstanding some of the letters from even the people that are in favor of this application is that basically for your purposes, these properties are not eligible for riprap. That's why they need a goal exception, right? That's the whole point is that these properties right now can't get riprap under that implementation rule number five under goal 18. We would not sign off on, we would sign a land use compatibility statement if they did apply saying, no, it's not eligible, which is why we're doing this rather exceptional thing called the goal exception. And so I, I hope that sort of provides some kind of framework about, yeah, Luxes are very common. But goal exceptions are very rare, and this is a rather exceptional circumstance from the beginning. And that's how we found ourselves here with this process of, of, of requiring a goal exception. At this point, I would want to turn to Jerry Herbage is, Jerry, do you have anything else procedurally that you wanna? Did I get that right in your mind? Is there anything else you would like to add to clarify to where, where we're at in this process?
No, I think, I appreciate your staff report so far. And I think you put this in context so that people can understand what is required. So that's fine. Appreciate it.
Okay, sure. So Madam Chair, members of the commission, you know, there, there's, there's been such an amazing wealth of information provided to you. You know, I tried because there seemed, it's, it's such a, a large topic and, and the applicant's original submissions were trying hard to answer all this criteria and, and it went in different directions. So you know, what I did was, you know, trying to make sure that we would, for everybody's benefit. In my staff report, I sort of went to unusual lengths to explain from a staff's perspective, what, what we think is going on in Glen Eden Beach. That's why there was so much of that discussion with, with the members of the scientific community. And so I, I, I don't know that I really, I don't think you want me to go through all of that again. But what I, so I really want to make myself available for your questions. But I do think it's so important that we all, if, if you're, if you, especially if you had, and I've never seen a situation where, where what's going on in terms of the science of something and the law are so unbelievably intertwined because if you don't understand the dynamics of what's happening in, in Lincoln Glen Eden Beach. And if you don't understand, that's why I said in the staff report, if you don't understand what a literal cell is and, and how the, each of these beaches are independent little stories and, and the, and, and how, what's happened there and how it might be completely different than other places. I mean, you really got to focus in on that literal cell. So we spent a lot of time in the staff report going all over all that. But I think it's so essential that we all have some kind of shared understanding about the facts. That seems to be missing so often today. It was one letter that had something of, actually, it, it was rather negative about the fact that, that our, that the staff report talked about Glen Eden Beach and the fact that the beach was in so, such trouble and it was eventually going to disappear. And they said something about, well, that's the county scientists. It's like, these are not our scientists, okay? This, these are, first of all, the one, the one scientist Doug Bless is hired by the athletes, one of the most experienced people who's done most of the riprap reports up and down the Oregon coast. You've got Dr. Jonathan Allen, who's one of the internationally recognized expert on beaches. And George Priest also was with the department and he, he's working for the state of Oregon right now. And we got a retired individual, George Priest, again, who's got a tremendous reputation. These aren't, these aren't necessarily the applicant scientists or they're our scientists. This is a, these are the four or five people really that are widely understood in Oregon to, to be the most knowledgeable people about those beach dynamics. And I, and I, and we're just fortunate to have the quality of, of people in the institutions like Oregon State University and, and Dagami to be able to provide us as much information as we have about what's going on there. So Madam Chair, members of the commission, does that make sense for you right now to basically for me to shut up and, and you, for you to ask questions of me about the staff report and, and we just sort of let that play out naturally that way?
This time, are there commissioners that would like to ask a question? You will have to wave at me and unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, I had a quick comment if I could. In relation to what Planning Director just said, I would say, I understand where he's coming from. But to the Planning Commission members, you're like the jury in the trial. And you need to look at the evidence, you need to analyze it and the qualifications of the people who have made the assertions, the scientific reports, the other evidence. You know, you need to look at their background, but make a judgment call yourself about where that fits in the decision criteria and make your own decision based on the decision criteria and the evidence.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more.
Okay. So I'm assuming everyone, we can always come back to any questions anyone has regarding anything in the staff report and how it overlaps and is different from other testimony we are about ready to receive. Okay, everyone good with that? Okay, at this time, we're gonna move into applicant testimony. I do not know who is going to begin that. I asked the technical staff and staff to help out with that and I have heard that there are going to be three with about 15 minutes worth of testimony. We will see. Casey, do you know who's queued up?
So Casey, if you would, would you bring Will Rasmussen in from the list of attendees as a panelist?
Okay, Will has been promoted.
Okay. And then you're going to want to promote Dennis Bartolos and David Phillips as well.
Dennis has been promoted and David Phillips, you are in the queue.
This time, we're going to turn this over per the chair's direction to the applicants, starting with Mr. Rasmussen. And it's, it's, or do you, sir?
Good evening. Thank you, Planning Commission. Thank you, John. I have some slides that I've prepared and hope to share if Casey, you were able to.
Yep. Well, I'm making you a host right now. You should have control.
Excellent. And can folks see the slides now? See the slide up there?
Yes.
Planning Commissioners, excellent. Well, thank you, Planning Commissioners and staff for making your evening available and for your general service to the county. I'm Will Rasmussen from Miller Nash. I'm speaking on behalf of applicant Worldmark the Club. I'm a land use lawyer and have the, had the pleasure of doing these hearings for about 15 years. And over that time, had the pleasure to do a number of goal exceptions along the way. And I've just never seen a site that called for a goal exception more than this in my history. But before we jump into the criteria that I want to walk through, I just want to just take a very brief second to acknowledge all the people who have got the process to this point so far, including the planning staff at the county, particularly Anno Husing, the state agency partners DLCD and Dogami for commenting and making their expertise available for this hearing. The attorneys Dennis Bartolos and Dave Phillips, who've been having this conversation with the county for years now. And most of all, the Lincoln County citizens who participated in the goal 18 process that was set up with Anno and the state and who went through the Oregon land use system to get us to this point. While goal exceptions don't happen every day, they are absolutely part and parcel of the land use system in Oregon. So I'm gonna try to give you a brief roadmap of what to expect from applicants before I dive into that. As staff mentioned, you're going to hear from three of us, me on behalf of Worldmark, Dave Phillips on behalf of the Sea Ridge Condos and Dennis Bartolos on behalf of the individual homeowners on Lincoln Avenue. You'll also hear from a number of the owners and just impacted residents nearby these locations. But most of those folks will just generally speak in the proponent time as opposed to the applicant time. For me, I'm just going to try to achieve three things in about 20 minutes. First, give a brief orientation to Oregon's goal exception rules. Second, to run through the reasons why this is the singular most appropriate state in the place in the state of Oregon or an exception to goal 18 of this flavor. And then third, a brief discussion of some of the unnecessary harm that would befall both residents and the county as a whole, if these exceptions were denied. So first, getting to the slides and the law, a brief orientation to the statewide planning goals and goal exceptions. The Planning Commission is probably aware that our, our 19 planning goals in Oregon are the foundation of our land use system. They guide the development of local comprehensive plans and they inform the decisions that counties make day to day in making land use decisions. Goal 18 is just the goal that governs beaches and dunes in the state of Oregon. The founders of Oregon's land use system back in the late 60s and early 70s created a pretty awesome system. They created a system that's withstood the test of time. But they were not so bold in what they were putting out there to think that they were perfect. They wanted to create a system that could be tailored to local circumstances and they did that in two particular ways. First, they gave local governments like Lincoln County, the primary authority to adopt, to adopt comprehensive plans and land use policies and make decisions like this. And second, they created an explicit exception system and process to create exceptions to the goals when there are legitimate local reasons for that exception, when they're documented by substantial evidence. And as I said in the introduction, this is probably the single best case I've seen, best place I've seen for an exception in the state. Some of the specific law language is up on this first slide. I won't read, read through it or frankly, read through any of these slides. So moving on, implementation requirement five of goal 18 is the whole reason we're here. The applicants request an exception to this one requirement under goal 18. And requirement five generally says one thing, if a property wasn't developed before 1977, that it shouldn't get riprap or protective measures. It's just the incarnation of a pretty strong state policy that disfavors and wants to limit riprap around the state. Worldmark Sea Ridge and the individual homeowners request a narrow exception to this requirement to prevent the imminent destruction of a resort, 80 condo units and four homes. We, to be extremely clear, we generally agree with the policies served by goal 18. We generally agree with protecting Oregon's beaches. That's why a number of our owners decided to live at the beach. We just think that there's sufficiently strong reasons here that the county should approve an exception for these properties. And now transitioning over to those reasons, the left column of this slide basically, basically summarizes the reasons that DLCD and the staff, the county staff have opined that a goal exception is appropriate here. And it basically boils down to the fact that this beach, this subsection of a littoral cell of Glen Eden Beach is irreversibly altered by the extensive proliferate, excuse me, the extensive proliferation of protective structures. Basically, there's a ton of riprap here. It's a place that has more dense riprap than anywhere else in the state. And that's all I'll walk through. That's because of very specific site conditions going on here, history, geology and human development that just doesn't exist anywhere else. But it's to a, it's to a point where this beach is degraded enough that regardless of weather, the county fills in these last full of just a handful of gaps that are left in a riprap wall or not. The condition of this beach is unfortunately set for the future and it's, it's going away. It's natural functions from both a sand restoration standpoint and ecological value standpoint, it's die is cast. On the right hand column has some of the specific, you know, some of the sub reasons supporting that specific finding that exists here that we'll talk through, both this exact reasons of why this beach is going away. And on the flip side of the coin, a of county and state policies that are supported by approving the exception, things like protecting property in life, protecting economic development value and the like. But to be clear, the primary reason that this place is appropriate for an exception is in the left column. This beach is unfortunately not going to act like a natural beach in any of our lifetimes or in any time in the future. This is just a couple of photos, so you could see what we're talking about. The left photo is the Glen Eden Beach Resort. The top photo is the individual homeowner's site on Lincoln Avenue. And the bottom right photo is the Sea Ridge condominium. One, one thing I want to stress, and I suspect you'll hear from a number of people about this, is how time sensitive this situation is. There is very little space between the buildings, and in some, in some situations, no space between the buildings on these sites and the bluff erosion, the ocean eating away. The, the left photos that are up on the screen are again of the Glen Eden Beach Resort. Those vertical columns that are starting to be exposed are the top portions of a seismic stability feature that was permitted and built over 20 years ago on the site, because these, you know, the silt's here, the sands here are loose and coarse. In a seismic event, there's a risk of this bluff collapsing as you would expect. And as a resort, as a resort that wants to be responsible about its investment, responsible to its owners, it built a seismic protective system there that you can just kind of start to see this top of it getting exposed. But as that gets exposed, its supportive structure and functionality is, it gets lost. And as a result, it's vulnerable to collapse in the event of an earthquake. On the right is the, is the Sea Ridge condominiums. That is also very close to the ocean. You can see where these rocks are kind of have fallen down. Those were protective of stormwater outfall, or no, of a sanitary sewer pump station. The Planning Commission might have noticed, and John earlier referenced a letter in the record from the president of the Glen Eden Sanitary District. Pump station number six is immediately east of this photo and is in jeopardy of getting eaten away and eroded. And it would obviously be not good for the environment, not good for the beach to have a sanitary sewer pump station basically fall on the beach in that location. It serves the 80 units of the Sea Ridge condominiums and just urgently needs protection. And the kind of penultimate example of the need for timely action here, need for the Planning Commission to, to decide to approve this and make a recommendation as soon as humanly possible, are the poor homeowners on Lincoln Avenue. These are before and after photos from a March collapse of this year. This unfortunately happened after we'd started writing our application materials for this. So it wasn't documented in our original submittal, but you can see exactly what happens at this location where the beach can come up to the toe of the bluff that's easily eroded, seawall collapse. If you look at the furthest right photo that's up here, you can see the foundation kind of hanging over the edge. And we just need the county to act as quickly as possible in getting through these hearings, and we hope for an approval at the end of them. All right, so just, we have literally 1,000 pages of expert opinion and technical reports in the record supporting this, but from a super high level, these are some photos from the Oregon Atlas of where protective structures are along the Oregon coast. The left column is the northern coast, the middle column is the central coast, and the right column is the southern coast. I'm not sure how well it actually comes across now that I'm looking at it on the screen, but if you smush your face up close to it, you can see that purple dots represent each of the protective structure that's existing in Oregon. On the north coast, there's not much. You can see kind of a cluster around Cannon Beach, it looks like, and a little bit in North Tillamook County. In the central coast, there's not much except for around Lincoln City and Glen Eden Beach where you can see a real kind of solid wall of purple essentially. Down where we're talking about in the south coast, there's hardly any protective structures as well. This is a very unique site. The proliferation of protective measures here have an impact on these gap spots like the three applicants, and frankly, increases the erosion at those locations. There are some statistics for the quantitative types on the Planning Commission on the right column about exactly the extent of riprap here, but it's roughly 75% of the beach, right, 75% of Glen Eden Beach is already protected by some sort of shoreline structure. That compares to less than 10% of other spots around the state. Again, this is another, just kind of another set of stats that overlays the protect, the spots that actually have built some sort of protective measure on top of the ones that qualify for it. So basically, some locations that don't technically qualify have some sort of protective structure that they built out there without an approval that result in about 89% of this stretch of Glen Eden Beach either already being protected or qualifying for protection. This slide zooms into the, you know, kind of this center part of this highly protected area where these three properties are just kind of left as gaps in the, in the riprap wall that exists out there. Over 90% of the properties in this area are protected from riprap. Ono did a good job of introducing this, kind of characterizing why we're here at the Planning Commission. Kind of my land use lawyer shorthand would be that the job for the county, the job for the Planning Commission is to decide whether these locations are suitable from a planning standpoint for protective measure. The actual approval to, you know, build the thing comes from OPRD, Oregon Parks and Rec. But what the county has authority is over planning, and whether the zoning should be such that these sites qual, can qualify for a protective structure or cannot. I would argue this slide in and of itself argues extremely strongly that these sites are, are appropriate for riprap. The owners you'll hear from later tonight will probably express, express some frustration on why all their neighbors got to get protected, even the ones that supposedly don't qualify. But these guys are left unprotected. And here's just a couple of aerial photos and some, some of the discussion from technical experts in the record about the impact of leaving these folks unprotected. HGSA Geotechnical Report, Doug Glass, who Ono Husing refused, referred to earlier, just notes that the proliferation of shoreline protective structures cuts off sediment supply from the beach. Basically, it keeps the sand from falling down and regenerating it. And that in and of itself exacerbates erosion. Mark McDonald, Dr. Vladimir Shepsis, did a detailed site-specific study and noted how the protective structures on these abutting properties to the north of, south of Glen Eden Beach, for example, Glen Eden Resort, for example, result in these unnatural embayments that you can see on this bottom aerial photo, kind of where the riprap ends, and then it, right where it ends, you kind of see greater erosion. It kind of cuts further to the east. And that's just because, as you would imagine, as a wave comes in at high tide, hits that protective structure. It doesn't just go straight back. It hits that protective structure and veers off to the north or south. That increases the rate of erosion in these situations where you have long stretches of revetment and then an unprotected property. And one thing the applicants wanted to do before coming in for this goal exception was to be able to speak knowledgeably about the environmental condition of this beach and at these specific sites. So we hired biologists from Everin Northwest who have coastal ecology experience to come in and assess the environmental situation along these sites. As this photo kind of suggests, and as folks who've walked up and down this section of Glen Eden Beach, I think intuitively know, this isn't pristine habitat because it's, it's severely altered environment. But they specifically looked for any, any sensitive species, any endangered species. They looked at habitat for fish and wildlife, and unsurprisingly, they concluded that this area is already severely degraded. They didn't identify any particular sensitive species on this site. So basically, filling in this gap doesn't have some unforeseen This is just kind of aerial photos of this stretch of Glen Eden Beach. You can kind of see what it's, looks like aesthetically from the sky, and you can kind of visualize what that habitat value might be. One of the reasons that this site is frankly depleted from a sand resource standpoint and is unlikely to recover ever, is the historic sand mining that happened at Schoolhouse Creek. This is just a couple hundred yards south of the Glen Eden Beach Resort. They were taking approximately 12,000 cubic yards a year. So we estimate some, some number north of 80,000 cubic yards of sand were removed from this beach at this location. That is a number that prior folks estimated was about half of the sand supply needed at this location. And that combined with all the riprap, combined with the inherently kind of vulnerable conditions of this location, make this ground zero for places appropriate for a Goal 18 exception in the entire state of Oregon, and unfortunately exacerbate the impacts of climate change on this already vulnerable strep, stretch of Oregon beach. These were the, some of the experts in the, in the record that Ono spoke with noted that, that taking that sand was taking away a non-renewable resource, which wouldn't have crossed my mind just as a land use lawyer, but it's a resource that doesn't just show back up. Some of this sand, most of this sand was deposited here from the last ice age, the rising and falling of oceans associated with that. So when you take away 80,000 cubic yards, it doesn't just show back up from the ocean. It's just gone. So regarding the kind of natural geotechnical instability at these locations, there's coarse sand here, a steep beach, and these things combine to make this site, quote, "highly susceptible to erosion." If you walk along it, and if you poke the, if you poke the bluff, please don't do that by any of these three sites. But if you do that, you'll see it kind of crumbles away pretty easily. As the water at high tides now comes up and reaches the toe of the bluff, it just eats away at it. And that's something that doesn't exist on most Oregon beaches. And that's why you see so much revetment and riprap on this stretch of beach. It's a function of natural geology, and one of the reasons why this spot is so appropriate for a goal exception. Chugging along, I alluded to climate change. Really, climate change, I, I view climate change at this location as kind of gas on an already existing flame. Obviously, that climate change brings with it increasing storm frequency, increasing wave height, ocean acidification, and more El Niños. The experts in the record uniformly note that those things combined with this geomorphology and geology at this section of Glen Eden Beach makes it the worst spot in the state for coastal erosion and for trying to preserve this beach. Some of the statistics that have come out in the data is that the rate of erosion at this location has increased sixfold since the 90s. That increased rate of erosion has not been seen elsewhere of anywhere I know of in Oregon. I don't believe exists anywhere else in Oregon. Again, this photo is, this photo in the middle is of the Lincoln Avenue homes, and I just feel for those homeowners, happy to be sitting on top of that. So to this point, we've talked about the degraded condition of the beach, essentially how the sand, the, the purpose of Goal 18, implementation five, you know, protection of dunes and beaches. Those dunes aren't ever coming back, and the sand isn't ever coming back. The beach is kind of going away. And because of the natural conditions and the manmade development, they, whether this exception is granted or not, that's an unfortunate reality. I'm gonna pivot for a moment for the rest of this presentation to talk about other reasons, other goal policies and implementation requirements that exist in statewide planning goals and in the county's comprehensive plan that argue in favor of saving these homes. So kind of getting outside of Goal 18 and talking about what benefits exist for saying yes to this exception. Goal seven, and comprehensive plan policies and county comprehensive plan regarding natural hazards calls for the protection of people and property from natural hazards. Obviously, that is advanced by this application. Lincoln County's comprehensive plan docu, has documented for decades, I think since it was originally written, the unique natural hazard that exists along this bluff of Glen Eden Beach and part of Lincoln County, part of Lincoln Beach. Granted, this exception furthers those policies. A goal eight, and county comprehensive plan regarding recreational needs to satisfy the recreational needs and citizens of the state and visitors. These locations, particularly the resorts, the resort and condos, and even the homes, serve those recreational needs. People come here to recreate on these beaches, stay at these locations. Goal nine, regarding economic development and county comprehensive plans on those points. I'm gonna share some data with you that's in the record about exactly how much of an economic driver these oceanfront locations are for Lincoln County. That's exactly the kind of stuff that the statewide planning goals want to see considered in local comprehensive plans and want to see weighed in decisions like this. You know, essentially, you have to weigh the benefit of trying to preserve this, this dying beach, which all of the experts say, all of the experts in this record anyway, including experts from the county, DLCD, Dogami, Doug Glass, who's touched more of these things than anybody, say, is going away versus all of these things that can be saved by protecting these homes. Goal 10, regarding housing. Goal 17, regarding coastal shorelands, likely are also arguing in favor of this. And even Goal 18 itself calls for local jurisdictions to, quote, "reduce the hazard to human life and property from natural or man-induced actions associated in these areas." So even Goal 18 itself acknowledges there's a balance to be had. So I won't, I don't want to go into too much detail, but let's, let's just, I just want to point out that these properties have significant value, both to the owners and to the county itself. You see combined assessed value of over 23 million. Actual value is, I would, is higher than that. Just letting these fall in the ocean would be a massive loss and something that I don't think, you know, the owners would take lightly, put it that way. But it doesn't just impact the owners. You know, the next direct impact is, is county tax revenue. These properties pay about $300,000 a year in county property taxes. We also commissioned an economic impact analysis from Dr. Edward Waters and Dr. Hans Radke to PhDs in economists. They, they estimate that approximately $430,000 of associated property taxes would be lost from decreased property values surrounding these locations. In the record, you may have noticed there's some letters from not just the folks who live at these spots, but from the neighbors saying, hey, what happens to me if you let these guys fall in the ocean? You know, we have sewer lines and water lines, and it doesn't bode well for me if my southern or northern border gets eaten away by the Pacific Ocean. But there's very detailed economic assessments that go beyond my ability in the record documenting these points. And just local economy harm, the complete, the Lincoln County comprehensive plan talks a lot about how tourism drives an element of the economy. And the economists estimate that if these locations aren't protected and fall in the ocean or are issued a red tag and folks are not allowed in them, about 141,000 lost visitor days per year will occur. Lost revenue from tourists will be about $8.5 million. Lost revenue from building operations and maintenance is about $2.7 million. They estimate 190 jobs would be lost in all, $6 million lost in employment income. I just ask that if the county considers this, it also considers the real world impact of not basically saying you're gonna prohibit protective structures through your zoning. These, the values served by Goal 18 are basically lost along this beach, and these are already built structures. This isn't, this isn't a situation of an applicant coming before you and asking for you to do a zone change so that we can go develop something. This is just asking for the ability to preserve what's already there. So in conclusion, Glen Eden Beach is the most heavily protected spot in the state. That's because of a number of unique sites, site-specific conditions that exist here that don't exist anywhere else. Those things make it the most appropriate spot in the state for a Goal 18 exception. The armament that's there prevents the beach from replenishing itself and creates an increased rate of erosion at these existing gap spots, like the three owners that are developed here. Allowing the destruction of the resort, the condo, and the four detached homes does not serve any benefit here. The experts in the record are uniform in saying that this beach won't be, won't be helped or hurt by this application. It's just going the way it's going. And there's substantial economic reasons to, and just moral reasons to grant this exception and let folks protect themselves from this known natural hazard. So with that, that's everything that I, I came to present. I'm gonna pause, see if the Planning Commission has any questions. And if not, next up is Dave Phillips on behalf of the Sea Ridge Association.
Casey, can you switch off the control back out of there? Go back into view mode?
Yeah, well, standby.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And I will get to the screen share. Okay, stand by, almost there. Okay.
Great. Okay, commissioners, um, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Rasmussen on his, in any of his testimony?
I just had one, one question.
Go ahead, Deck.
He mentioned that, that this beach was not capable of replenishing itself. As I understand it, most beaches are formed by the sediments from streams and things coming in that, that don't work, or is there something supernatural?
So the, the, that's what I thought as well. So thank you for that question. It's very central to this application. About depending on, he only counted about five or six experts opined and they're largely on pages. There's, there's Doug Glass's report from Schlecker and Associates that applicant, applicants provided. But there's also about four or five other ones that Anna Husing tracked down testimony from that are on pages eight through 12 of his staff report. And they, they note several things about where the sand comes from. The primary source of sand is actually from the last ice age and the ocean's levels coming up and coming down. So if you look at those grains of sand out there, you'll see they did not come from upstream or at least over 99% of them did not come from upstream in a river that exists in Lincoln County. They came from sediments from millennia ago, from a time when the world looked very different. And as a result, when the beach was mined for sand for, for about four years and about 80,000 cubic yards was taken away. That took away a resource and then the existing 80%, let's call it, properties here that are already riprapped or reveted prevent replenishing of sands from just erosive, you know, erosion happening. So one of the questions posed was, well, geez, if we, if we ripped out all of the existing revetments, would that fix this beach? Would that allow natural occurring dunes to exist here? And my recollection is that they said, even if you did that, maybe so, maybe not, you know, with, with right, rising ocean levels and the other considerations going on here, even if you did that insanely draconian measure, it'd probably go away. And that in any event, allowing these three properties that are the only unprotected ones in this long stretch to protect themselves would have no impact on the condition of that beach and those dunes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to Mr. Phillips, who perhaps will have 15 minutes worth of testimony instead of 30, but I know how that goes.
Apologies, apologies.
Okay, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you for the record, David Phillips, Chair Bobbitt and Commission. I represent Sea Ridge condominiums, a group of homeowners in your county and together with, with Will Rasmussen and Dennis Bart told us, we have joined together to provide this. This goal eight, this package of goal 18 exception applications for your consideration. And although I, I could continue on and, and in even my own experience with years of meetings with county officials and in particular on a hoozing, go into quite a bit of history and, and really set the stage for this special opportunity that we have to, to provide a solution to this longstanding problem. I'm just going to do three things and, and shorten my presentation to, to cover. First of all, thanking the trusted players that the county has at its disposal and that have testified and will continue to provide information in this record. Briefly touch on the exception process. Mr. Rasmussen did that expertly. And then also just spend a few minutes on the, the, the heart of that process and the demonstrated need elements in the goal exception process. And to kind of come back to the 10,000 foot level view here, number of years ago, my clients asked me to begin meeting with, with county officials. And a few of the first handshakes in the county included Mr. Hoosing and county council at the time. And I, I also got to know Doug Glass. You, you've seen or read, read his writings in the record. And throughout some meetings a couple of years ago on a process sponsored by DLCD, which was a focus group aimed directly at trying to solve these kinds of tough problems that your county and the state in general has, has in its forefront here, met a, an exceptional scientist number named Jonathan Allen. Also the policymakers and those folks at DLCD that have really taken the, the brunt of the pressure from political sides, from public sides, as well as, as the private landowner sides. And gotten to this place, this, these exceptional circumstances as, as Otto has, has characterized them. As Will mentioned, this is a situation that in years and decades of, of land use practice in the state and, and other surrounding states. The facts and the law in this case that we're asking you to look at are unbelievably intertwined in a way that presents a clear path. Otto has a very explicit and I would call, I would say it an exceptional intuitive way of focusing his energies and his broad experience being the planning commissioner, excuse me, the planning director at Shuor County. His careful consideration in crafting the, the staff report and also in all of the meetings is indicative of his work on this case from the beginning of my involvement, my, my meeting him a number of years ago. I'd like to point you toward pages eight and nine of the staff report where he takes careful consideration of firsthand conversations with Doug Glass and Jonathan Allen and quotes them directly. In, in this situation, the experts that, that Will mentioned are really the, the authorities on the subject. Mr. Hoosing, I believe is the authority on this coastal management issue in the state of Oregon. And the scientists involved in this matter, Mr. Glass and Mr. Allen have given clear indicators that this stretch, this literal cell of, from Glen Eden and Lincoln Beach is unique and even more so exceptional in its history and also in the application of goal 18. Because if we do nothing, the beach, as we quote from the record, is gone. If we protect these properties, it will not adversely affect the ability of the beach to regenerate itself because of the long history of the development of this stretch, this literal cell of beach. And I'd like to thank Mr. Hoosing personally again for his detailed work. He, he's, he's the kind of practitioner that, that also lives in the weeds and from 10,000 feet pretty much at the same time. And that's rare. And I'd like to, 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 to tell you that you have a trusted advisor in that regard. The, the general exceptions that the reason for, the, the reason why we're here tonight was covered in detail by Mr. Rasmussen. Really don't have a whole lot more technical analysis to add to this, except to say that goal 18 has in this context, a two-fold purpose, first to balance the protection and conservation of the coastal dune resources. And we all know that. And I'm sure Mr. Bartold, this is going to give us quite a lot of history. He's, he's been involved in this for decades. But also to protect human life and property from the harms resulting from natural and man induced actions. And the history of those man induced actions for decades is clear from this, from this record. And if you focus on any of the, of the exception criteria, I'd like to call your attention to the demonstrated need reasons exception. And, and it's a three-part test. The, the test is cited and discussed in a Lubbock case called Ocean Shores Coalition versus Coos County. There's a, that test involves one or more obligations created by other goals, three through 19 for the county's acknowledged comprehensive plan or identified to the county is at risk of failing to meet those obligations, which is clearly the case here. Number three, the exception sought will help the county maintain compliance with the, with those obligations. And, and as Will mentioned, we submit to, to yourselves and to the record. And with that, the, all of the analysis that we have presented to you that approving this, this group and this set of goal 18 exceptions will do just that in helping the county maintain compliance with the identified obligations in not only goal 18, but the other goals that you're charged with that responsibility to, to further. And if you, and I understand from Otto's introduction that, that despite a fairly voluminous brief that just came into the record that I have not had a chance to, to take apart that, that Mr. Hoosings conclusions, his recommendations are clear and, and are supported substantially and exceptionally here in, in this record. And if you have any questions for me, I would ask you to go ahead and, and ask those now, or you can ask Mr. Bartolus or Mr. Rasmussen at any time. I'm not sure if we're going to have much time, if, if at all for rebuttal near the end of tonight's session, but I'll just leave the time open from here forward.
Hey, at this time, commissioners, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Phillips? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to Mr. Bartoldus. Welcome back to Lincoln County. I understand.
Yeah, thank you. I'm here. I'm sitting just a couple of blocks, well about a block from the planning department office. So I, I couldn't stay away. I had to come back to the old Hans and my old office didn't kick me out. They still let me have a desk. So we're good to go. As Mr. Phillips indicated, I, I reflected briefly with my clients who were here with me with my first planning commission hearing was back in 1978. Which was a long time ago. And despite all that time, Commissioner Spoldit still predates me on the planning commission. He was on the planning commission when I did my first hearing some years ago. But I appreciate, my, my, my wife said, well, tell them this is the last time they'll ever appear before them. If they bag you what you want tonight and then, then you're out of their hair. So maybe, maybe that's the truth. I'd like to comment just a little bit about in particular on our client's property. We've been dealing with these four properties. The grants, the Tonnabes, the Canes and the Soviis for some period of time, trying to find a way forward. As you can see from the voluminous materials that are included in your packet, there's been a lot of issues on their property. We've provided letters that were written to them in the 1990s indicating that they were entitled to shoreline protection through those letters. We've discussed this kind of in depth, but in discussing this with, with Otto, we determined that the way forward would be to go through a goal 18 exception. And then while we were working on that, we discovered that both Sea Ridge and Wyndham were also interested in that. So we joined forces because candidly doing an exception is extremely time consuming and it's extremely expensive with everything that goes into this. And none of us are taking this lightly at all. My clients had a situation develop earlier this year, the very end of February, the last day of February, where they lost a huge amount of their property to erosion. And if you, this is in particular, the grant property, which is the one hanging on the edge there. And also the Tonnabi property, which is adjoining it to the north. And when you see the videos of what happened there, you can see the water swirling around from the rip rap to the north. Where it is rip wrapped onto these properties. Our clients for properties compose an area of about 250 to 260 feet where there's no rip rap. There's rip rap immediately to the north. There's entitlement to rip rap immediately to the south. And there is in fact rip rap about three lots south of the, the client's property. So they're caught in this situation where their properties are extremely at risk. Now let me just say something about goal 18. And that is in going forward on goal 18, I would say we're giving goal 18 a chance to avoid all the other issues that could be brought forth in, in other proceedings. But I say that with the idea that if goal 18 is going to work, this is the area where it works. This is the classic exception criteria on the entire Oregon coast or for any exception, probably for that matter. And if the exception process doesn't work to fix this, then the exception process doesn't work. It's broken. Shouldn't exist because this is the classic case. The facts in this case are not only compelling, they are overwhelming. They are overwhelming with all the facts that have been put together with all the experts. Some that we hired, quite frankly, but others that Otto contacted directly who concurred, they have no financial interests in all. They have no interest other than just their general scientific knowledge. So if this doesn't work for a goal 18 exception or exception in this, then it probably doesn't work. As, as Will said, you're looking at probably about 89% of this roughly three mile stretch that is either rip wrapped or entitled to be rip wrapped. You compare that to the other 360 miles of the Oregon coastline, there is nothing that comes close to this. And as I mentioned previously, there was the massive failure the end of February. But the observations interestingly of my clients, of the people that they've hired, the analysis that was in the DLCD, DLCD letter and the county staff report all agree that the impact of granting this exception is none, it's very negligible. I mean, it's indeterminable. So there's no downside in granting the exception. And you know, while I certainly can't and wouldn't speak for DLCD or the county, or even for, I guess now we have some opponents to this matter. I can't certainly speak for any of them. But it would seem that everyone would want this exception to work to show that the process works. Because if the process doesn't work here, it's broken. It doesn't work at all. I mean, that's just the fact of the matter. Putting together this exception was extremely time consuming. As I mentioned, it was extremely expensive. Getting a goal exception is no small task. It's taken the abilities of a lot of people. And then when, when Otto brought all this together in the staff report, I mean, we all acknowledge Otto's one of the top guys in the country on this. I mean, in his staff report, he reached out to other people. I mean, his staff report summarizes it is this is the classic case for an exception. Now I want to comment just on basically one other thing in terms of amending the comprehensive plan. You know, in all the years we've talked about any plan amendments, you kind of look at two things. Was the original planning in error? Or has there been a change in circumstances? And the answer here is yes, to both of those questions. Look at what happened back when we did the original comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. And this was in the late seventies, early eighties. I mean, I was in a meeting about every week with files under my arms, talking about this. And one of the areas that qualified for a community growth boundary was this entire Lincoln Beach area, all the way from the time he hit Surf Rider, all the way up until the time he hit Salishan. That was all heavily, heavily developed to urban densities, small lots. As Otto points out in the staff report, this is developed going decades and decades back, even before the 1970s. So it seemed probably pretty. So it seemed probably pretty clear that this should have all been entitled to an exception. Um, I understand that the way the county planning department reads this, that Salishan got an exception. Initially, the county said, you don't get it, but then they went to Circuit Court and, uh, the court at that time ruled that they were entitled to vested rights, um, which we think comes into play here. And if you look at the state's rule on this in development, it simply doesn't have good effect in the Lincoln Beach area when it's so developed. Does it make sense to say you can have three thousand, um, uh, feet of rip rap, but then two hundred and fifty feet in the middle don't get it? What happens? You're setting up those properties to be destroyed. That's the simple fact of the matter, and that's actually what's happened. Um, the second, uh, matter would be how there have been a change in circumstances. Well, the answer to that is yes, too, because, uh, and I guess in a sense, it's the same side, you know, it's just the opposite side of the coin, is that if we knew then what we knew now, then there probably would have been an exception taken. Uh, back when I started practicing, we didn't talk a whole lot about, uh, about climate change. The, uh, studies in terms of rip rap really hadn't all been accomplished. Uh, but there has been a change now that we're finding out about all these things. And as Will mentioned, uh, he talked about the sand mining that's happened. And in addition, and this is an extremely huge factor, because i- it's, it happened right at the point of failure. The county has a drainage ditch, or drainage pipe that comes out right between the Tanabi property and the Grant property in a five foot easement that the county accepted in the early two thousands. And the, uh, the interesting part about that is we wrote to the, um, owners, um, to the east of us, saying, you need to change this, uh, drainage because it's causing this damage. Well, what happened? And this is in the record in our supplemental materials. They went to the county and they said, county, we want you to take responsibility. We want to deed this drainage, uh, area easement to you. The county accepted that. And since the county accepted that in the early two thousands, they haven't done anything. Uh, it's continued to erode our client's property. It's dumping water. And where that failure is under the Tanabi property, you line that up with the culvert, and you'll see all the water that's dumped there. You'll see the water in the submittals that Richard Grant made that shows this massive hole that's created by all this drainage from the county pipes. And we see that as a very compelling factor and specific to the situation of our client's, uh, four properties. So the last thing I would say is not only do we have to find out if goalie, if the exception process and goal eighteen really works, the other thing we have to find out is if it works in a timely manner. Now, Will, um, was very polite in his comments about saying, we need this to be done as humanly possible. Well, until I moved to a little warmer weather, I lived on the Oregon coast for sixty-six years. Grew up on the Oregon coast, lived on the Oregon coast all my life. And history tells us that sometime, probably early October to the first part of November, we're going to get a storm. And when that storm comes in, we're going to have a lot of wind, we're going to have a lot of rain, and we're going to have high tides. Well, look at the Grant property, the Tanabi property. What's going to happen to those properties in those conditions if they don't have protection in place by the first part of October? The fact of the matter is, they're probably, properties will probably be lost, and those homes will probably be lost. And what benefit does that serve anybody to have these homes lost? The destiny of this beach was determined decades ago. I mean, we can argue over timing and things, but, you know, it happened a long, long time ago. This is the classic case for an exception. I mean, the classic case for an exception. And on behalf of our clients, we're asking you to grant this exception, uh, for all three properties. But if you had to choose one, hey, choose our clients, right? Uh, because we feel we have the most compelling case when you look at everything, but all these, uh, but, but the facts do show that all these properties should be entitled to, uh, to a goal eighteen exception, and we would request that you grant that. Thank you.
Okay, um, any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Bartolus? Seeing none, um, we are at, let's see, time wise, eight thirty-five. If everyone's still good, I'm going to begin asking for more, um, testimony in favor. So any commissioners, if you're okay with that, we're going to go ahead without a break, unless you need a break. You need to tell me now. Okay. All right, at this time, we will, um, hear additional testimony in favor of this goal exception. And just keep in mind that we have many of your letters with your arguments on record that we've read and we have, and we have listened to the three legal representatives. But if there's something that's still missing from, um, um, testimony in favor now would be the time. So I'm going to leave this up to Casey now to coordinate this. He is our expert IT person. Thank goodness I'm not.
Um, okay, well, should we then kind of shift to the attendees? And we can maybe take them, uh, just in alphabetical order, like they appear, and then ask them if they want to speak. Is that how you'd like me to kind of approach it?
If that's what's been working with the Board of Commissioners, that sounds terrific to me.
Okay, um, why, I'm going to start with, um, what appears to be, um, just a phone number. There's no name associated. So if your number five, four, one, seven, six, five, two, two, three, five, I've, um, asked you to unmute yourself and then let us know if you do want to speak now.
And if you do want to speak, we need to get your name for the record.
Thank you. And that would be, um, two, two, three, five, uh, appears to be our only phone number. I've asked to unmute you, so you can go ahead and talk.
So, um, Casey, if that doesn't work, if, um, they're not able to connect or whatever, um, we can ask people to, if they want to raise their hand electronically, that, that use that feature, um, uh, to
Okay.
provide testimony, if they want to, if they want to click that button, um, looks like that's working.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I love that suggestion.
Then, um, if, if I, just one other thing, I'd like to remind everybody, we are going to limit your, uh, uh, testimony to three minutes. Um, and, uh, staff will go ahead and keep time. We'll just, uh, pop in after two minutes and remind you, you only got a minute left as you're providing testimony and then let you know when three minutes are up.
Okay, um, and Megan, maybe you could help me keep track, because sometimes, uh, people shift around. But let's start with the first hand raised, and this would be Terry Holden. And you should be able to speak.
Okay, Mr. Holden, go ahead.
Tara, you're unmuted.
Somebody just put their hand down. I see that there are five people with their hands up. I cannot tell who they are, but I can see that five people, five, okay, now six more people.
So let's give Terry Holden one last shot here. Are you going to provide testimony? I see they're unmuted, but.
But you did that, right? So maybe they did not.
Okay, let's see if this is even working. Let's move on to Frances Wepler. Frances, you have been.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, I've been a Worldmark owner for over twenty-one years with my husband, and, um, we live an hour and a half from Glen Eden Beach, and so Worldmark Glen Eden Beach is our number one away from home. It's like a second home to us. Uh, my grandchildren are fifteen, fourteen, and ten, and every single summer since they've been three, the older ones were three and four, we have spent a week at Glen Eden, and this is where they learned to swim. And so the pool and the beach and the, um, hot tub have always been important. Um, my husband and I walk the beach constantly. It's just broken hearted that this whole year, and if it hadn't been for COVID, I, we still wouldn't have been able to use those, um, facilities. We, my husband and I spend ten to twelve times a year at Worldmark. We know the staff, we walk in the door, they greet us to hello, they know us by name. Um, Sandy, uh, and Myrna and, uh, April and Bruce have been friends for twenty some years. We know people in the community, we shop at the markets, we use the facilities, uh, that are nearby. We buy our liquor, we go to restaurants, we know some of the restaurant people by first names, and they know us the minute we walk in. So it's like the loss of the money in the economy from just me, there must be thousands that we would lose that from. And Worldmark is like a second home to us, and we would hate, uh, to see anything happen to that facility and, and the beaches. Oregon beaches are important to Oregonians as well as other people who come here. And, uh, it's, um, essential that I would hope that the three lawyers, the three people that just spoke, that Dennis, David, and, uh, Will, gave great arguments, great. Uh, I love Will, thank you for all those visuals. I took pictures of all that erosion, and now I understand it even more so. And so it seems like it's, uh, I don't see any other reason not to do it. I don't see a reason not to do it, to get Grant this exception. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay.
And, Andrea, if I could interrupt this for a second, it looks like a number of people are maybe entering something into the chat function, and it might be good to remind people that that won't be preserved for the record, that that's.
So noted. Again, reminder, um, anything you put in the chat is not part of our record, and Planning Commission is not even looking at it, so it's not part of any testimony. If you want to have testimony, you have to either send something in written, um, or, um, speak now in this process, okay? Um, Casey, who's next?
Looks like, um, next we have John Randstall.
John Randstall, do you wish to add additional testimony? I know that you have a letter in.
Do you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is John Randstall. Uh, I and my wife have owned Worldmark for several decades, and we are both disabled. And we come to Glen Eden Beach, and that's the only way that my wife at that location can get exercise. We can't walk on the beach, but we use the pool, and using the pool allows my wife to get exercise. Uh, we go to Glen Eden Beach at least twice a year. Uh, we're both retired, disabled, and we go there for, you know, we go a couple of times a year for a month each. So we're two months per year, and we're at Glen Eden Beach for a minimum of two weeks during that. So a four week period during this, uh, during the, uh, year. During that time, of course, we go to stores, restaurants, we get to where we meet people. We would be devastated if that pool area or the resort were no longer be available to us. Uh, at present, the pool area is not available to us, and we definitely need that. We go there, we go to the fishing, we go, what charters? We feel that our tourist monies are well spent within the Lincoln County area. But without Glen Eden Beach, it would vastly reduce our time in that area. We love that area. Uh, I implore you to do whatever you can, please, ladies and gentlemen, to move forward, to make it available to where this area could be continually used by the owner members of the Worldmark community. I don't want to take up more time. Some other people have done very well in, you know, voicing the opinions. I, again, I implore you to do whatever is necessary to maintain that property, make it safe and continually usable for the people that come to that location, as it is quite often full of travelers. And I assume every one of those travelers are spending some dollars in the Lincoln County area. I thank you very much for your time, and I'll turn my time back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, right now, um, while we're getting ready for the next one, Mr. Bartolus, you have a hand raised. Did you want to add something at this point?
Well, I just wanted to let Casey know that both Richard Grant and Ed Tanabi are at my office. So when it's time for them to speak, you can just, uh, bring them in through, uh, my connection here.
So they'll just jump in front of your camera real fast?
Good. Yeah, we'll just switch chairs and they'll be right here where I'm at.
Okay, very good. Um, let's jump to Franklin Sherco. And you should see the.
Randstall's still on, not muted yet.
I got him muted.
Okay.
For Sherco, you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Frank Sherco. I'm a permanent residence in South County, just north of Yahats. I support the proposed action considered for shore protection for the affected properties. But I also want to add a couple of points. Number one, uh, I've added a, uh, put in the testimony a five page memo to the commission. I hope you read it or will look at it. Lincoln County is ground zero for shore protection issues. And I put a graph in there that was provided by the state two years ago, showing the existing conditions. I would ask the Planning Commission to take a holistic and systematic approach to the entire coast and not just one particular area that's in the midst of a hardship right now. There are more cases out there than just the ones you're discussing tonight, although they are important and we support that. Second, we have a huge amount of rip rap north of my property. And I provided an air photo showing that, um, circumstance and how it exists all the way north, as far as the eye can see, north of the eight oh four trailhead, just north of Yahats. Um, your planning director, in a friendly back and forth email with me a couple of months ago, about this particular application, said that the Glen Eden Beach and Lincoln Beach area was the only place that had extensive rip rap and should be discussed about a goal exception. I don't think that's the case, and if you look at the air photos that we've provided, you'll see what I mean. It is not the only place, and we ask the commission to look at the whole situation and not just one at a time. By your possible action tonight, you are setting a precedent, and you are setting a de facto policy about similar situations. And I implore you to act on that and look at all of those similar situations. The next point I would make is that the second sentence in the existing section five goal eighteen rules say there should be a local comprehensive plan identifying areas where development existed on January first, nineteen seventy-seven. It doesn't say lots, it says areas. My opinion is that your planning commission has an obligation to produce a comprehensive plan, not to be confused with your countywide general plan, but a comprehensive plan identifying those areas, not lots, where development existed. I guess the final point I would make is that even if you look at a lot by lot situation, our situation is that we had a, a house built on our property somewhere between nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen fifty-two, based on arrow photos of the area. A, uh, residential compound was built out with at least four structures.
I'm going to interrupt you, Frank. You've, you've got, you've already used three minutes. Can you wrap it up really quick?
I'm going to interrupt you, Frank. You've you've got, you've already used three minutes. Can you wrap it up really quickly?
Let me finish the sentence, and then I'll get off. At least one of those structures survived past seventy-seven, and I provided in my memo an air, a satellite photo that was caught in nineteen seventy-seven in August, showing the residential use of the property at that time. I would ask that a formal hearing be scheduled about our particular situation, so we can bring you all of the facts and not just dwell on one particular area that, again, we support. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. All right. Casey, who's next with the hand up?
We are going to jump to Bruce Dummer. So Bruce, you've been sent that allow to unmute function.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Well, hello, and thank you. My name's Bruce Dummer, and my wife and I purchased Sea Ridge condominium five years ago. And later, I joined the Board of Directors for the HOA, and I'm currently serving as president. And I want to branch off for just a second from my testimony and and say that we had a large number of residents who wanted to provide oral testimony. And I ended up condensing that list down to six people, including myself. And one of those six is Terry Holden, and I don't understand why the connection didn't happen a few minutes ago, but hopefully we can line him up at some point, and then there will be four others in addition to me. So back to my testimony. Historically, the Sea Ridge buildings were developed during the nineteen eighties by an individual named Jerry Jones, who's now deceased. And if I if I was a Lincoln County or a state of Oregon authority with a deep knowledge of Sea Ridge history, I think I might hold a bias against Sea Ridge simply because of the circumstances surrounding its development. I might think, why should I now diminish the power of Goal Eighteen by voting to allow Sea Ridge an exception? Jerry Jones knew all about the laws at that time, and yet he chose to develop this oceanfront property anyway. And my response to that sort of thinking is very simple, and that is Jerry Jones has had no involvement with Sea Ridge for over thirty years now. Today, what Sea Ridge is, is the owners of eighty condominiums. And we are real people who have chosen to live here on either a full-time or a part-time basis. And we have formed a community, a living, breathing part of the social and economic fabric of the Depot Bay and Lincoln City area.
One minute.
Please don't let the legacy of Jerry Jones distract you from the compelling facts that demonstrate the uniqueness of our stretch of beach. Please vote to let us build a permanent structure, protect our beautiful community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Casey.
Cameron Perry. Cameron Perry.
Hello.
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 We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Yay.
Yes.
Good evening, commissioners and all. My name is Cameron Perry. I have been a Sea Ridge homeowner for over twenty-five years. We are requesting an exception from Goal Eighteen, allowing Sea Ridge to provide a beach-protecting structure. In nineteen sixty-seven, Governor Tom McCall and the legislature passed the Oregon Beach Bill. It established a sixteen-foot contour line west of that line, opening up three hundred and sixty-three miles of public, quote, recreational easement. In nineteen sixty-nine, HB ten forty-five legislation created the beach zone line. This meant all lion, all land west of the BZL was under the authority of the state. Land east of the BCZL was private property, not under state authority. Both public and private property rights were protected. Things changed again when the legislature in two thousand changed the beach zone line, replacing it with a questionable meandering vegetation line. Then, of course, statewide Goal Eighteen came out with the nineteen seventy-seven requirement, which has created much confusion and restrictions towards beach homeowners. A quote from Governor Tom McCall, who said, quote, "You and I shouldn't claim we love Oregon more than anyone else, but we love Oregon as much as anyone. Our thoughts today and our deliberations to come must spring from our determination to keep Oregon lovable and to make it even more livable. Please support our request for an exception by providing a comprehensive plan allowing Sea Ridge to riprap for needed protection. After all, Mother Nature provides rocks and should be considered as an environmentally friendly armament. Thank you for your time and your consideration."
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Donald Benz. Donald Benz.
I'm here. Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing this meeting and for us to participate. You've heard just about everything that I would like to say. I would just like to iterate, my wife and I purchased our property at Sea Ridge in nineteen ninety-one, so that's been a long time ago. At that time, we were told a permit was in place, and we paid for it every year to provide beachfront protection when the next major event occurred. That event occurred in later nineties, and we were denied because of the new ruling on beach. You've already heard that the heavy concentration of protective structures has a destructive effect on the bluffs and the properties around them. You've already heard about the property northwest, the four properties that were featured in the Oregonian and the riprap protective structure just to the north and south. So in summary, I would say perhaps it's true that Goal Eighteen law has had a positive impact on certain sections of the Oregon coast, but in our cell, it has been a failure. The proliferation of protective structures around us have created a dangerous situation for Sea Ridge. Goal Eighteen should not be used for the state to obtain private property without compensation, and that's what Cam Perry was talking about, the change in the vegetation vegetation line. One of the roles of government is to provide security and assist in the safety of its citizens. The state is inappropriately using Goal Eighteen as an excuse to take property while not offering protection to the owners. Fortunately, Goal Eighteen does have that exception. And my last comment, the beach bill was designed to allow access to the beach. This armament will do nothing to prohibit access to the beach. In fact, it may even enhance it because there will not be erosion in these areas. So again, you've heard many, many people speaking to the facts of the case. We wish that you take these into serious consideration, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Russell Inman. Russell Inman.
Unmuted. Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for staying late tonight, too. My name is Russell F. Inman, Jr. I have lived at Sea Ridge condominiums for about five years, and it is my only home. I'm located about two hundred yards from the oceanfront, and my condominium is not in immediate danger. I will pay about forty-five hundred dollars in property taxes this year and shop, and I shop locally at Lincoln City, Newport, and Depot Bay. As I understand, no exception request to Goal Eighteen has ever been submitted. As a homeowners' association, we have chosen to submit now, as we have seen locally, the hazards and repercussions we face with the encroaching Pacific Ocean. In the past, we have adhered to the directives of existing authorities and regulations concerning beachfront activity. These directives and regulations have changed over the years. We realize that authorities change, as well as the interpretation of regulations. In the same manner, the hazards that we face as homeowners have also changed, and we can foresee the loss of our total beachfront consisting of twenty-six units of permanent and vacation homes. We have chosen to act, and it is our responsibility as property owners to request a common sense solution to an impending disaster. That is why we have applied for amendments to the county comprehensive plan and an exception to the statewide planning Goal Eighteen. As the beachfront bluff has been eroded over the years, it has not only exposed some of our condominium complex to structural failure, it has also threatened a more westerly sewer collection point for the area, as was mentioned by Mr. Rasmussen. Replacement of any infrastructure such as this collection point also exposes our homeowners' association, all eighty members of our Sea Ridge HOA, to liability for the loss associated with the rebuilding of these units and the resolution of the association's legal requirements.
One minute.
I got another minute?
Yep.
Good, thanks. Still appreciate it. Our shorelines do need our respect, and like all natural resources, must come under regulation. These regulations properly sustain these resources for future generations. But that shouldn't mean that such resources are untouchable. We have built jetties and harbors and aligned roads that benefit our coastal populations. So it is with the bluff. We want to protect our beachfront. The installation of riprap or protection barriers will enable our continued use of the twenty-six oceanfront units. Whether or not this erosion will continue is not certain. However, having watched the activity of the last five years, it appears that the bluff and these twenty-six units will continue to be attacked by sea, wind, and rainfall.
That's three minutes.
It's time to act. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I'm hopeful this commission will look with favor on our submission. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Okay, jumping to Michael Harrington. Michael Harrington.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Michael Harrington. I live in Newport, and I am the Chair of the Newport Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. And I appreciate the opportunity to provide some comments to the Planning Commission on behalf of Surf Rider. We have submitted full comments via email, and I will briefly summarize those. Surf Rider is an environmental nonprofit dedicated to the protection and enjoyment of the world's oceans, waves, and beaches. This is accomplished through a network of activist volunteers. Our members are volunteers. They live, work, recreate on Oregon's coast and beaches, and we value these places very much. We care about healthy beaches. Surf Rider's interest is to first and foremost protect the public's customary rights to access to and recreation across Oregon's dry sandy beaches. We further recognize that we have lost and will never regain those dry sandy beaches in the Lincoln Glen Eden Beach area. So in essence, we've lost what we sought to protect here already. The staff report does a really good job of describing the history of this area and development, and how protective structures have basically destroyed the beach. So we're all being asked to trade the public interest for the protection of private property. Surf Rider neither opposes nor supports this effort. But in the future, there needs to be some kind of comprehensive process to avoid situations like this. And so I'd ask the Planning Commission that you be thoughtful about protecting our public beaches. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, next we have Michelle Baylor, perhaps. Michelle.
Nice. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, and I know this has been a long grind for you guys. I'm going to start my timer. But thank you for all of the input and for allowing us to speak. I am a longtime Oregonian family. My father was born not far from this area in nineteen twenty-seven, so we've been around a little while. And I was raised fishing, hunting, walking on the beaches. As we have all heard, the reason for Goal Eighteen was a really great reason to protect our wonderful state and the beaches. However, the six hundred feet of oceanfront at Sea Ridge is not a good beach for protecting for four excellent reasons. It's not adjacent to any endangered habitat. It doesn't house any endangered species. All of our surrounding neighbors have riprapped, and I've yet to see anybody surfing on our beach. I've been there a few years now. There are twenty-six homes at Sea Ridge that are oceanfront. They provide the county with a combined tax revenue annually of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And it's not in the best interest of the county to lose this revenue when it's eroded. I will say, however, as I am not oceanfront, I would gain by the loss of those twenty-six homes, because I'd be a lot closer. But as an owner to the community, it is not in the best interest of Sea Ridge. Several of the owners on the oceanfront are full-time owners. They live there year-round. They vote in all elections, including local. They shop in the county. They dine in the county. They contribute greatly to the economic base and the vitality of the county. One other point worth mentioning. Sea Ridge is not asking for the county to support us in protecting our ocean berm. We are willing to do it at our own cost. We are just hoping that we can use the protection that neighbors on both sides of our property already have in place. We love our setting. We work hard to maintain a quality of an outdoor environment for our complex. We keep our beach clean. We want to preserve our western property line. And we ask you to support us in giving us an exception to Goal Eighteen. Thank you so very much.
Okay, jumping to Diana Marsden. Diana. Diana Marsden, you should see an icon allowing you to talk.
Hello.
Yep.
Hi, this is Diane. I'm sorry, my computer froze up there for a minute. My husband and I are owners at Sea Ridge, and you have my testimony in writing, and I I don't want to be redundant with the plethora of awesome testimony and arguments that have been presented tonight. And after that testimony, I really would just like to summarize and say that we trust the Lincoln County Commissioners that will do what is right and what makes sense, and will grant a Goal Eighteen exemption to Sea Ridge and the other unprotected properties along Lincoln Beach. We implore you to look to the future, a future with a beautiful, safe, and economically viable stretch of beach in Lincoln County. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
So Chair.
Can we try Terry? I see Terry Holden is there now, and he was the phone number, but he's also come in a different way. Is that right? Correct?
Yeah, Terry, I've sent you that that button there. You should should be able to talk.
Okay.
Terry, you with us?
Still not there. Okay, and then Mr. Bartolos has two people, and is that it for testimony at this point?
You know, it it looks like it, and what I was thinking.
No, we have another hand raised from Charlie Flabin.
Okay.
Okay, let's so let's go to Charlie. Charlie, you're on, and then we'll jump to Dennis.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Chair Bobbitt, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Charlie Flabin. I'm the Oregon Policy Manager for Surf Rider Foundation. I'll be brief. Mike Harrington did comment for the record, and I think you have our comments, written comments on the record as well. I just want to make a strong case for, you know, there was a lot of reasons provided tonight around the goal exception where where Surf Rider really would disagree with. In fact, we would pretty strongly disagree with in, in, in weighing the public trust and the public balance against that of, of, of properties and property rights and property owners. This, this, however, is an extremely unique area, an extremely unique situation where we believe that that public trust and that public resource, as Mike so eloquently put, has already been lost. The, the, the significant resource that we, we seek to gain or that we seek to protect has already been lost, and that is one and the only reason why we would not be opposing this Goal Eighteen exception. In, in fact, we would be vehemently oppositional in many of these cases to a Goal Eighteen exception. And in this particular case, we find that the findings of the county and that of the LCD staff as well point out and are very eloquent in the exceptionally and extraordinary, unique circumstances of this situation. And whereas only a few property owners here are being punished for the continual and perpetual bad decisions. And I, I think we, we also would like to go on the record and say that we believe very strongly that Goal Eighteen is a good land use planning goal. And it does do the right thing, and it does guide good land use planning when implemented well, when local land use planning considers coastal hazard overlays, when implemented with proper setbacks and geofore recommendations. We believe in Goal Eighteen. We also understand that there's extenuating circumstances and unique situations, and we've arrived at one. And this is probably the one and only time you might find Surf Rider Foundation not in great opposition to such a Goal Eighteen exception. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. So Casey, let's go to Mr. Bartolos and perhaps after those, oh, go, go ahead, John.
Yeah, man, Chair, if you can, I got Terry Holden on the phone. I'm gonna pipe him through my mic and just, I think this is gonna work, so bear with me for one second. Okay, Terry, you got the volume on your computer turned down? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. You start talking. I'm just gonna make sure everybody can hear you okay, all right? All right, okay.
Can hardly hear.
Hello?
Can you hear him okay?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Fabulous. At least we've established two is the computer challenge of the group. But anyway, I thought the, the, what I heard tonight, particularly from the professionals, the attorneys, was very well laid out, very, very compelling. Independent of their testimony, I was kind of looking at the Goal Eighteen and the heavy saturation that we have in the cell surrounding Sea Ridge. And we have a unique set of circumstances which has been brought out really bodes well for a variance of some sort and a, an amendment. I, I, I think rather than rehash what others have said, I, I think it really comes down, the time is of the, the storms last winter were just terrible. There's the photo evidence of a number of issues going on, and I, I don't think there's really time to waste. We should be proceeding as quickly as possible. Michelle before me also mentioned that everything we're talking about is at no expense to the county. And in the meantime, you're preserving tax revenues and other benefits to the county. So it seems like a pretty straightforward plan that's good for everybody. It, it allows homeowners to be treated like their neighbors were. We're in that ten percent, ten percent minority at this point, and we would like to be treated like our neighbors that have been either grandfathered in or had a petition and were able to get approved over the last forty-six years since Goal Eighteen came into play. And again, I would like to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, John, for the lift there. That worked. All right. Um, so Dennis, we're gonna switch places with you now.
Okay, um, great, thank you. Ed Tenabi is gonna be the first to testify, and then after him, Richard Grant will testify. So Ed's gonna take my chair here.
All right.
Hello, my name's Ed Tenabi, and myself and my wife Joan live at forty-eight twenty-five Lincoln Avenue. One of the homes at risk of falling into the ocean. My wife and I have lived and worked in Lincoln County since moving here in two thousand and three. My wife has owned and operated a retail store and retired just a few years ago. I still work full-time in the area. We are natural, natural-born citizens of the United States. Residents in Lincoln County have been paying property taxes to Lincoln County as well as state and federal taxes. The riprap lot to the north of us and water runoff from the adjacent drainage pipe has always facilitated erosion to our property and our neighbors to the south. We've observed waves being deflected off the riprap lot and pushing the runoff from the train pipe along against the bluff, causing a rapid erosion at the base of the bluff. In late February, March of this year, our property, along with the three neighbors to the south, had been seriously eroded due, due to high surf and tidal events. We have lost approximately twenty-five to thirty feet of our lot, and another approximately twelve feet of lot is undermined and at risk of caving in. The back of the cave is approximately ten to twelve feet from the edge of the, edge of our home. We do not feel our home will survive another winter. We feel fortunate that no one was hurt in these events. Today, we're caught up in the semantics of the definition of Goal Eighteen. We thank Will, David, and Dennis for their presentation on our behalf. We want to make it clear, we're not proposing that Goal Eighteen be abandoned. We're not proposing the entire coast be opened up for shoreline protection, and we're not asking the public to pay for our damage or for our shoreline protection. We're only requesting that Goal Eighteen be interpreted and applied with common sense to the residential areas of the coast. We are frustrated and tired and scared we'll lose our home. The safety and welfare of my family and home is paramount to us. We have been talking to and working with the county and state for thirty years regarding this issue, and will continue to do so in the future. The only thing we're sure of at this time is the county is as tired of talking to us as we are to them. We're not here to point fingers or lay blame. The bottom line is we are where we are, and we cannot change the past. We're here to present our case for a Goal Eighteen exception so we can save our home. And we encourage the Planning Board to approve our request. We thank you for your time and for listening, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Tenabi. Okay, next. Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name, please?
Uh, Richard Grant.
Yeah.
I'm here with my wife in Dennis's office. And nineteen ninety, we bought the house at forty-eight fifteen Lincoln Avenue. And at that time, that property had eligibility for riprap along with all of our neighbors. And over the fourteen years, we applied to various riprap issues, a sand alteration, a property line riprap frontage, and then several outfall ripraps that were denied because they weren't close enough or there was no erosion. And two thousand and four, State Parks was talking like they would work with us on the riprap outfall to this drainage pipe that is creating, creating quite a problem. We applied, and at that time, the county informed us, and we were taken back a bit that they had erred in our eligibility status for the last fourteen years. So to move forward, we discussed things. In two thousand and seven, we installed a seawall and centered the seawall over the storm drain that is causing all the problem. We put about forty feet towards Tenabi's property, the other sixty-five towards us, feeling that would protect the most property with the seawall. So why is this storm drain so important? What happens is the water comes down the pipe. It drops down the face of the bank. It keeps it straight up and down and then cuts it under a little bit. And then the other issue that comes along is you have the riprap to the north that channels all the water from the ocean directly to the storm drain at the base. So what you have here is almost a perfect storm. Then you throw in the conditions of what I think I've seen the last thirty years with the ocean, the, the sand erosion, and you really have the perfect storm. And as you probably, most of you know, that our seawall collapsed and basically from one of the geotext that you guys speak highly of, they feel it was because the storm drain was undermining the seawall. So we would like to see the exception passed. I, I think Will did a great presentation, and a lot of his pictures show, you know, the, some of the erosion that we, this storm drain has caused us. Doing a measurement of the yardage, it's out, we're out roughly three thousand nine yards just in that area. And I think if you go to a Google Earth photo, which Will basically did, it'll show you the same thing. We appreciate all the work the county staff has done. And we'd just like to get the exception passed so we can live on with our life and
Great.
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Casey, where are we at?
You know what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna lower all hands on our attendees, and that'll sort of clear the queue, so if you wanted to speak and you didn't get a chance to, if you could raise your hand, that'll help us identify anyone we've missed, but it looks like we have gotten through all those that have raised hands, so.
Yeah. Oh, Casey, I have no other member from the public that I have written down that had raised their hand. So now is the time, if you haven't spoken already.
Right, so anyone else that is attending that would like to give testimony in favor, or at this point, I guess we've heard all that, and I don't believe there's anyone attending that's in opposition. And I'm sure Mr. Bartolos' hand is raised just from previously.
Yeah, that's probably true. Computers are not one of my strong points.
Yeah. So at this point, I have a question for staff.
And true. We have another hand raised from Mr. Brad Newsom.
Okay. Um, all right, let's go ahead and, and take that. Go ahead, yes?
Whenever the Chair and Commission is ready, we would, we would like a brief rebuttal opportunity.
Okay, that gets me to my question to staff and to our County Council, Jerry. Since we know that the record has already been requested to remain open, and that's for either side, and then that would be for like a seven-day period if we grant that motion. I think we're obligated to grant that motion. Then there's the seven days for rebuttal. Do we do rebuttal tonight, and then a second rebuttal? Do we wait for that, or how, how's that handled legally? It's my question.
Okay, thank you. For the record, again, this is Jerry Herbage, Assistant County Counsel. I wouldn't mix and match those concepts. I think if the applicants would like to have rebuttal tonight, I would allow that. The other aspect has to do with ORS one ninety-seven, seven sixty-three, sub-six. And if someone requests that the record be open, just as you said, Chair, Madam Chair, it has to be left open for a minimum of seven days. The second seven days you were talking about, I would say, don't you, that the purpose of that would be to allow people to respond to what was submitted in the first seven days, but, but not to introduce new evidence because that will keep the process going. And then the final seven days, unless it's waived by the applicants, the law says that the applicants will have at least seven days from the last seven-day period to submit written argument. And if you do this, and as it plays out, I think we have the Fourth of July thrown in there. And so it says a minimum of seven days. You might want to make that eight days so that the, the final deadline doesn't occur on the legal holiday. I think that'll be a Monday, July fifth, I think. So, but if, if, you know, I would make sure that there's no one else who wants to testify tonight. Yeah, I think we've tried and, and, you know, is there anybody else? So check that again, and then if, if there's a request for rebuttal, I would allow that tonight.
Great, okay, that's exactly what I needed to know. All right, so Mr. Rasmussen, would you like to go ahead at this time?
Yes, I have two quick rebuttal comments I want to make, and I suspect Council Phillips has, has another point. There was two comments tonight that kind of requested additional, bigger processes. Mr. Frank Sherkow, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, asked for his property to be considered in a bigger process. And Mr. Michael Harrington from Surf Riders just asked that the county consider a bigger process to basically try to prevent what happened to this beach from happening to other beaches. Applicants, I think, at, at least for my client, are all in favor of bigger processes, but we respectfully ask that this application or these three applications be judged purely on their own merits. We put in a lot of work to get this application teed up, these applications teed up for the county. We paid the application fee. And even if the county or the state is gonna consider a bigger process, please just process these as quickly as, as humanly possible. It really is an emergency situation at these locations. And we just want to be judged by the, you know, the laws that apply to us and the facts that have been developed in this case. I also want to just take a second to pause and, and acknowledge the responsibility that Surf Riders took upon itself to try to call balls and strikes in this situation and stay neutral. I think that's really hard in these, this day and age for organizations to do that. And they clearly took a look at the record and took a look at the actual conditions on this beach in reaching that. And I just, just want to commend that as something that I think is, uh, something that's right in the Oregon land use process. Briefly, on the Oregon shores comment in the record, we'll, we'll, we'll submit written response to that. But I just want to say, part of their comments suggests that something about a goal, taking a goal exception here is against Goal Eighteen. That's absolutely not the case. The goal exception process is a pressure release valve to keep people from tearing apart goals. And here we've got, you know, more than twenty-five million dollars worth of property that's at risk. These owners aren't just gonna go away. And the goal exception process allows folks to look at site-specific considerations and basically be a release valve from a situation that otherwise doesn't have a fix. So I, I just, as somebody who believes in Goal Eighteen and somebody who believes in the Oregon land use system, this exception application preserves Goal Eighteen. It does not undermine it.
Great, thank you. I have not had an opportunity to look at the Oregon Shore letter. We'll have to deal with that subsequently, so.
Oh, and actually, I had one last process comment. As it relates to Wyndham Worldmark, we would be, you know, this is just a recommendation at this phase. The, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation on that, and as a result, this isn't gonna be the And as a result, this isn't going to be the last opportunity folks have to comment and the last decision that's made. And as a result, given the absolute urgency involved here, uh, Wyndham Worldmark would, would waive any final rebuttal seven day period just to try to keep this thing moving forward so that we can get these homeowners uh, a chance of protecting themselves before the storm season hits.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Phillips, I think um, you would want to rebut to?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Bobbitt and Commission, just briefly, um, three quick points. And I, I believe that it's in the, in the materials, but it hasn't been discussed explicitly how narrow the exception we are asking for will be. Uh, to contrast with Miss, uh, with Mr. Sherkow's uh, comments, we are not setting a precedent. Uh, I'd like to say it this way, what this is, is a narrow Goal 18 exception. What it is not is some kind of an exception that would then open the door for um, assailant of Goal 18 up and down the Oregon coast. These circumstances are exceptional and we've got a litany of experts that have, uh, that have shown us and have, have submitted their testimony in their, their very esteemed uh, testimony into the record. And back to this idea that a goal exception should work, this is the time, this is the place, Mr. Hoosing is the right man at the right time. And we have this opportunity to do just that, to employ an, an exception process that has been um, in place for uh, much longer than the problems that have come out of this uh, unique cert, set of circumstances. Let's make it work. Um, I want to thank Charlie, I sat next to him two years ago in all of those uh, focus group meetings where DLCD had sponsored those, those meetings and those hearings. We um, Charlie and I would, uh, would normally take in this cert, set of circumstances, opposing views. And it, it, it says a lot to um, this process and this particular set of circumstances to hear him candidly say and the, uh, the director of, of the local um, Surf Riders organization to, to recognize that the, the resource that, that, that we all love and know about the Oregon coast that is a naturally functioning beach is no longer present here. And there's really no downside to employing this process and we urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. All right, at this point, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Bartoldis? Nope.
No, I think they, I, I think that uh, Will and Dave summarized uh, what we have to say. Just to iterate, what we're looking at here is a very narrowly crafted exception for these properties that would uh, apply in these very unique set of circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this point, thanks to everybody for getting us to this point. And um, so at this time, we have the request to keep the hearing open for, uh, the record open for seven days. This is for anyone to submit uh, material. Um, but I need to have a motion, so planning commissioners, this is your time to unmute. And um, I would look much forward to a motion. Um.
Madam Chair, could I interrupt for a second? Uh, Council Herbage Chair, um, I think it might be helpful to hear from each of the attorneys uh, representing the applicants uh, as to whether they or not they want to waive their client's statutory right to written argument. Um, you know, you've already said correctly that the record must be left open for seven days. But as a matter of due process, I do believe that we should have a second seven day period. And it's not just for the benefit of the applicants, it's for the benefit of everyone. That is, you've already heard that a response will be made to uh, Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition. And you know that they may want to uh, to respond to comments made during the seven day period. So it works both ways. And as a matter of due process, I think we need to have at least seven and seven. But if, if the applicants to speed up matters want to waive written argument, they can. And if they're gonna take issue with me on the seven and seven, they could certainly express that now. But I would like to have a process that is, is uh, fair and ironproof here as possible. As uh, counsel for the county and uh, planning commission, um, procedure is important to me that uh, uh, we don't have issues with that.
Great, thank you, thank you Jerry. So um, Mr. Rasmussen already has indicated, um, and this, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Bartoldis, this is your opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah, this is Dennis. Um, we would waive uh, that last requirement the same as Will indicated. This process needs to move quickly. Uh, if Mr. Herbage is saying we need seven and seven, uh, I think that puts it on the twenty-eighth. I understood that, you know, uh, historically you met on the second and fourth. I would like to see a decision come out of that meeting on the twenty-eighth because this must get to the county commissioners because it is required to go to them. And we're shooting basically for an October one deadline to have every, not only to have this passed, but there's construction to do. Otherwise, these homes are going to be lost, so uh, we would waive it. I would go seven and seven if you could make a determination on the twenty-eighth and move it on to the county commissioners, so the county commissioners could be having a hearing toward the end of uh, July or sometime in July. I think that's totally appropriate. So to the extent that Mr. Rasmussen indicated he would be willing to waive that, uh, I concur, I agree on behalf of my clients.
Okay, um, before Mr. Phillips, I um, correct me if I'm wrong Jerry, but I don't know if we can, we can, we can schedule and guarantee a meeting date, but I don't know if I can guarantee we'll absolutely make a decision. I mean, it looks to me like that is totally possible, but I don't think I could guarantee that there would actually be a decision on the twenty-eighth, is that correct?
Here's the problem that you're facing from a practical standpoint. If you have seven and seven, generally what that would mean is that the final seven, the back end needs to be submitted, say by five PM. If you, if you convene at seven, are you really gonna be able to review the last minute materials that are submitted? As witness what happened tonight, you got a hundred and thirty page or whatever it was document uh, that came in just before this hearing. So uh, you have to think in terms of the practicality uh, of, of really being able to review some of that last stuff. So I, I would say you need to just, you know, I don't think you can easily do it that night. Uh, yeah.
I, I hear what you're saying, so let me, let's hear from Mr. Phillips while the commissioners think about that and staff is looking at our calendars.
Thank you for the record, Dave Phillips, again. Uh, I, I agree with county council and the other two attorneys that seven and seven. And to be, to be clear on the record, the, the first session of seven days is to re, raise any issue. And also, and, and staff, Otto is also uh, add, adding his uh, his affirmance in here. Um, that, that is also argument and evidence on, on any issues for seven days. The, the second seven day period is for rebuttal only and argument. And I do agree that in order to, to move these hearings along, that we suggest that I, that I concur with the other two lawyers that we need to do a seven and seven open record session for the first section and then uh, the, the second seven days would be for, for rebuttal only. Um, but for purposes of, of decision-making, um, there's a practical uh, element of this that um, that county council has brought up and it certainly, Otto understands is that if you're getting briefs two hours before a hearing um, and, and there isn't really anything new in them, um, I'd suggest that the, the commission um, recognize that uh, that there may or may not be any, any interplay between new evidence and uh, and, and just arguments that have been rehashed. But if, if new information does come in right up next to that, uh, the, the, the reset um, hearing and deliberations that uh, that you should take your time and carefully uh, consider those arguments.
Right, okay, so the, yeah, there would be the twenty, the second seven, there is no, the deadline for that, there is no new evidence whatsoever that to be allowed, but um, it still could be problematic with um, as county council has indicated with um, um, making a decision, um, any other.
Um, so the second set should just be responsive, you're, at least from our side, you're not gonna get a brain dump. You've gotten all of our arguments. Really, the only thing you're gonna see come in from us, I suspect, will just be a first round short response to the long um, submittal that came in from Ocean Shores. And having perused that this evening, uh, I don't think you're gonna see any new evidence from us at all in, in even the first seven days. Um, the amount of information that came in in this first chunk, I think will be much greater than anything you'd see in that last seven days in a, in a hearing of this style. It's by definition only responsive argument. Uh, I, what I might, you might ask a planning director if he thinks he could have maybe draft findings for you by then. We would certainly do everything humanly possible to support staff um, in preparing those, if that's helpful to the county, just to keep this thing moving along. Uh, we certainly want the planning commissioners to have time to make a decision, but under these unique, you know, these kind of dire circumstances, we really plead to however quickly you possibly can to reach a recommendation.
Well, here's the thing, uh, Council Herbage again, um, to me, after the seven and seven, there'll be a time when the commission convenes and you can work that out. I already explained the, the concern you have, but I think that this is all sequential so that we won't know what the planning commission decision will be until they convene and make a decision. And when they make a decision, uh, it would only of course be an oral decision, not a decision for land use purposes. And typically, uh, there would be some instructions about either preparing findings or preparing an order. And um, that, that needs to follow, um, so. Uh, we want, I think the county is desirous of expediting, but at the same time, uh, we need to remember due process and to do things appropriately and sequentially. And uh, I'm sure that we, you know, the planning commission have to make a decision and basically it's to approve the exception or deny the exception. If you approve it, typically you would uh, request the applicants to prepare draft findings. They would still need to be reviewed by staff, uh, probably possibly modified. If it's a denial, there's different ways of handling that, but uh, frequently staff would uh, do up the order. But it all, it all takes time and uh, so you need to do one thing at a time. Do you understand what I'm saying? You, you're not gonna, you're not gonna convene in fourteen days with findings complete, uh, and ordinance ready, findings done, uh, that ain't gonna work.
Okay, thank you, um, all right, so um, staff first here. Um. It seems to me that we could, you know, scheduling a meeting the same day with the two hour um, time difference in a deadline for submittal and then having a hearing could be risky for us going through all the information. Um, however, um.
Well, let me ask you this, can the planning commission, and this is to planning staff, because you haven't done this too much in the past. Is there any consideration that you could have those seven and seven and that you would meet on a Tuesday instead of a Monday?
I, I'll, I'll weigh in here and say that, you know, given the extraordinary nature of everything involved with this, that I, I would say to our, to our chair too, that from a staff perspective, as long as we can get a quorum, if we need to break from those Monday meetings to do something else, um, as long as we can get a, as long as our planning commissioners are available um, and we can get a quorum, um, from a staff perspective, we'll make that work. I, I think it is important though, uh, Jerry, as you pointed out, that getting a little ahead of ourselves, I mean, we, we really need to get direction from the planning commission about what they want these findings to look like. Now, I, I have a pretty, pretty good idea of what I think they ought to look like and I suspect the applicants do. But that's, it's still, we, we really need to, and, and to the extent that they, some of the stuff that, you know, if, if they really feel confident about where things are going, if they want to start, they ought to start, you know, firing up their own ability to, to start creating some draft findings, but um, I, I, I think you're right in saying that we really need, we really need to have the planning commission take action and so, and build upon whatever you might, you might have in draft, based on making sure we get that, that final um, those statements that the instructions from our planning commission about what, exactly how they want to, what, what they're trying to achieve in those findings, so.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's a long answer to a quick question about, yes, we'll make that Tuesday work. If, if we, as long as we can get a, a quorum and as long as the chair is comfortable with that.
So that we're looking then um, convening on the twenty-eighth and then possibly the sixth, when you're talking about the Tuesday? Or we are not convening on the twenty-eighth at all? Let's clear this.
Oh, well, that's up to the planning commission. What I was saying is, is if you wanted to sort of move this around, move this along in an expeditious way as being recommended, if the second seven day period is on the twenty-eighth and you have that risk of things coming in at five o'clock, then you could convene on the twenty-ninth, that's the Tuesday I was talking about. If you felt that that was not, if that was not what you wanted, you know, you could make it the following week. Okay, but you need to have time, you need to have time to read the materials.
Exactly, so commissioners, I have not heard from any of you this evening. Um, anyone have any thoughts about this? Otherwise, I'm gonna ask for a motion. But I mean, seriously, we're talking about uh, this big decision, but it's timely. One way or another, which way we recommend um, to move things forward. Are you comfortable with them um, convening on the twenty-eighth and trying to go as far as we can that day? With the possibility of then having to call an additional meeting the next day or the next?
That's up to you, I wasn't suggesting convening on the twenty-eighth, I was suggesting convening on the twenty-ninth. The twenty-eighth is simply a deadline, a, a deadline.
Okay, well, that makes more sense to me, so.
I think twenty-ninth sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. And Terry?
I could make the twenty-ninth work.
You can? Okay. Staff, is that free on the calendar as well and doesn't conflict, can we have a meeting on a Tuesday?
We will, we will make this work, this is a, this is our top, to, to serve this process is, there's, there's nothing more pressing that we bump, if there was something there, we'd bump it for, to make sure that as long as the planning commission was comfortable, because it's a tight timeframe.
Right.
If, if, in, in case somebody decides to do another dump at the last minute, we're gonna have to, we'll, we'll, that, that's, that's really Jerry's point is that.
Right.
You know, that's the downside, right? If, if, if there's something, again, thrown at us at the last minute.
Well, if that's the case, can we, we still have the meeting, but then we might have to?
That, that, I'd, I'd, I'd rather go ahead and have the meeting and, and just see what happens and, and roll with the punches at that point. And uh, cause here we are worried about a submission that may or may not happen at the last minute. It may not be big, it may not, so I, I think, given, given the circumstances here to keep things moving along and, and to keep things fresh in our own minds, right? I mean, in the planning commission's minds in terms of, you've gotten a lot of information tonight. you've gotten a lot of information tonight. You've, you've already, a lot of you, thank you, have read a extremely long record. Commissioner Spolnick and all the years that he served, he said, he's never seen anything so lengthy and complex as, as what, what's been put in, in your laps. So, um, look, the, the staff will make that work. And it, it sounds like we're pretty close to having a quorum and the downsides are manageable if, if we, if we, if we, if we act that expeditiously.
Okay. So we're talking about, um, making a motion for the record and a meeting date. Is anyone comfortable with that, uh, making that motion?
Because again, we're trying the 29th, right?
29th. Correct. Yes.
I just want to confirm that Casey is also available because he is our technology.
Thank you, Megan.
As well.
I'll make it work.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Casey. And maybe I could summarize it to expedite. I think that the motion would be in recognition that you have a seven day request for, uh, keep the record open. That must be granted. So the record will be left open and that could include new evidence. And, uh, it's really an open period and that will be until 5:00 PM on Monday, June 21st. And then that will begin after that, the second seven day period. And that will be for rebuttal or to respond what has been previously submitted or to submit argument. But it is not a time when new evidence will be allowed. And that period will expire the second seven day on June 28th at 5:00 PM. The other part of the motion will be for this planning commission to reconvene on Tuesday, June 29th at 7:00 PM for the sole purpose or for the purpose of deliberating to reach an oral decision. The, uh, at that meeting, there will be no new testimony. Uh, the record will be closed. And, um, and again, the purpose will be to deliberate, to reach an oral decision and to make motions to move along, uh, the written decision. If there's any, any, any objections from any of the attorneys on that proposed motion, I'd like to hear that.
No objection here.
No objection.
No objection. Thank you very much, counsel.
Okay. Shaylan, did you have something?
I have a question. Um, does that mean we will not be meeting on the 21st?
No, that, wait, timeout, timeout. The 21st is a separate application and we will be meeting on the 21st, but we will be continuing that application. That is not this matter. It, because, uh, attorney, um, Wendy Kellington in that matter relating to the, uh, her clients in, in that case, uh, MIS 21, whatever it is. Uh, she's asked that that be continued or postponed, um, because she wanted to see what would happen in this particular matter. So keep those matters separate, if you would.
Okay. So that does mean that we would meet, but probably briefly on the 21st.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you for asking. Good, good point.
Okay. So, um, commi, uh, commissioners have heard what, uh, um, Jerry has proposed as a motion. Would anyone like to take that up and make that a motion? Terry, Judy?
I will move. I will so move what, what, uh, what has been stated. Um, as the first seven days will be new evidence submitted um, for June 21st and.
At 5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM. And the commission will also meet at 7:00 PM on a different matter. On the second seven days will be rebuttal or argument, nothing new to be submitted by 5:00 PM, June 28th. And then the commission would reconvene with no new testimony for deliberation and decision on June 29th at 7:00 PM.
That sounds perfect, Judy. And who seconded?
Shaylan.
Shaylan?
Yeah.
I'll second.
I think Shaylan beat you to it, Terry. Sorry about that.
That's good because my connection is lousy here.
You came through loud and clear right then.
All right. So, um, got a motion and a second. And, uh, Megan, do you want to call role of the people that are, the commissioners here for yes or no to, for the motion? Or, well, we're not all on, uh, video. We couldn't, we can't all wave. So.
So you, you asked for the vote, right? Andrew?
Yes. And I.
So you want to show a hands or, or, or just a yes or?
For, um, Judy?
Yes, I.
Judy, okay. So it is unanimous. The motion carries. I got everyone there. Great. Okay. So we will look in our email boxes and everything and we will see each other on video again on the 21st. Um, okay. So at this time, this is, this part of this, um, hearing is closed. Um, are there any additional planning commission concerns at this time? I deeply apologize for not having a break. I hope everyone, um, was okay.
Okay. And this is, this is Jerry Herbie. Just a reminder to the planning commission, uh, to avoid ex-party contacts during the pendency of this matter. Um, it just creates, it could create a delay in, in the process and, and we don't want that to happen. And, uh, just, I appreciate all your work, all your effort. Um, you'll have the materials to look at. And again, we'll reconvene on the 29th and, uh, you'll make your decision then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll reconvene on the 21st as well.
Yes, but remember, let's not mix and match because it's technically a different application. But yes, we will.
Right. Yeah. We're at the planning commission concern. So yeah, that's, uh, is there anything else that we need to know about staff? No. Okay. This ends tonight's meeting. Thank you everyone for your participation and have a very good evening.
We're adjourned.
Bye.
Thank you.
I thank you, Casey, Megan, John, Otto, Jerry.
Good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.